Good evening, welcome to the May twentieth, two thousand twenty-five council meeting. Can we get the roll?
Councilmember Evans.
Present.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Randolph.
Here.
Mayor Millman.
Here.
Councilmember Bess Campbell.
Present.
Councilmember Arndt.
Here.
And Councilmember Taylor.
Here. All rise for the flag salute please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands united, one nation under God, individual and liberty, justice for all.
I have an amendment to the agenda. We do need to have a special session at the end of this meeting.
I have a motion, wait a second.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Deputy Mayor Randolph, for yours.
We need to add an executive session in order to discuss land acquisitions and other personal matters.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, motion carries, will add the executive session to the end of our council meeting to discuss a land acquisition. Special presentations. Mr. City Manager, do we have a special presentation?
No, no special presentations this evening.
Okay, that brings us to public comments. I understand that we have a lot of people signed up. And do we have any virtual? Anybody wanting to comment in virtual, okay. Alright, so we, public comments, when I call your name, please come to the podium and state your name and whether you live in the city limits, and you will have three minutes. First on the list is Susan Perkins.
Hi, I'm Susan Perkins, and I live in unincorporated King County, and I'd like to take a moment to speak about the schedule conflict on June seventh between the two thousand twenty-five Woodinville Pride Parade and the City Light Church's two-hour outdoor concert. It's my understanding that each group was given a permit for the same time slot. Sadly, the scheduling conflicts sometimes happen and can cause issues that need resolution. I've been a resident of Woodinville for twenty-one years, my husband and I have raised three of our six children in Woodinville, and as a member of Holy Innocents Church and a citizen with family members and friends in the LGBTQTA community, I feel, I, like most of my neighbors, want both groups to have their voices heard and their events to be a success. What I've always loved about Woodinville and our community is our ability to work together with understanding for all viewpoints and ideologies. Because both these groups share the common belief of respect for all the citizens of Woodinville, I have complete confidence in all my neighbors that they will find a solution that works for everyone. And on a personal note, I'd rather do almost, I have a cold, almost anything than public speaking, but I'm doing this because I've never reached out to city council with a concern, but I did so because I have members of my, this affects members of my church, my family, my friends. I reached out this morning to, via email, texts, city council members Mike Millman, Michelle Evans, James Randolph, Dave Edwards, Sarah Arndt, and you responded quickly, and I so appreciate this. Thank you so much for your quick information and guidance, it means a lot to me, this really wasn't easy to do, thank you.
Thank you very much. I would like to add that we've came to a solution. So, the Pride event is going to be moved to June fourteenth at Wilmont, and we're going to work with them on facilitating and making that a, making that a successful move.
That's wonderful, thank you so much.
So nobody's going to be displaced, and we worked on that today, so that's, it's gonna, yeah.
Resolution for both sides.
Correct.
That's wonderful, thank you.
Thank you. Allison Farmer.
Good evening. Allison Farmer, resident outside the city limits. So on March the eighteenth, this city council asked Green Partners to come back with a more flushed-out developer agreement before any zoning amendment would be considered. Yet here you are, being asked to put the amendment on the planning commission's work plan without the DA being any further defined. This is not fair on you, and it's not fair on the planning commission. The reason quoted, the processing of the code amendment is important as it allows Green Partners to ascertain the feasibility of the project and invest in refining the project and development agreement negotiations. This is our retail center, its present zoning with added height allowance supports just that. GP have our current zoning to work off of, and it was there when they bought the lot. Their first project proposal found it was work just fine. You even created a sweet spot interim zoning for the affordable to enable them to begin negotiations. I love going into places that surprise me, and believe it or not, if GP come back with a plan that looks like a giant flower with a beaten retail center and affordable petals, I would be the first one jumping up here to say, no problem, who needs retail on public facing streets? But that's not what's happening here. They are asking to be allowed to build less retail and add luxury townhomes to their boring box development. Right now, Woodinville does not need that. We and our roads can afford to wait for something that honors this much-loved prime city site. When a developer is allowed to ask for a zoning amendment during a DA process, I feel the intention of that course is there to support a DA, not to enable the developer to come up with a feasible one in the first place. This feels like a repeat of what happened with Old Town, where the zone amendment being sought before a firm proposal was submitted. The planning commission rejected that, but you ignored the recommendation, the DA then fell through, but that rezoning of that area is still intact. I feel any zone amendment request from a developer needs to be tied to a specific DA, otherwise you are permanently changing the city's zoning in an ad hoc way to enable developers to come up with more profitable plan. I'm sure that's not how city planning works. The reason for this request tonight is questionable. It feels like yet another one of those procedural stepping stones needed to grant GP a vested DA in a speedy fashion before you adopt an affordable housing policy. Just say no to this zone amendment, we need retail in our retail core, we need an abundance of retail to make the spaces more affordable. Residents expected something special on this site, and so did you, but you are the only ones with the power to hold out for that. Woodinville's heart's in your hands, please do the right thing, thanks.
Terry Thomas.
Hello, I'm Terry Thomas, I'm a resident of Woodinville. This is, in my ten, eleven years living here, this is the first time that I've approached the council, so I appreciate that opportunity. I just learned about the Green Partners' proposal just a couple of hours ago, and changed my personal schedule to come down here. As a longtime Boeing engineer and production planner, I can see that this proposal isn't sufficiently identified and vetted to mitigate, I think, a lot of the concerns that our citizens of Woodinville would have. And I'm really interested in what is being done, or what has been done, on the south corridor of that area, but I do think that we need to take a really careful look and rather measured because of the impact of the traffic. There isn't any mitigation of traffic other than being on one seventy-fifth, so, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Daniel, I think, Burge? Did I get that right?
Thank you for your time. I've been in Woodinville for thirty-four years, at first within city limits and now in unincorporated Woodinville in King County. I just learned about the development plans downtown, and my wife and I are very disappointed in the direction it seems to be taking. I think the city council needs to think carefully about what your vision of downtown and the character of Woodinville will be. My first impression is that it's completely out of scale with the small-town, more intimate feel that we are used to in Woodinville. I would imagine that tourists that come into Woodinville are expecting something interesting, something that's walkable, something that may have some green space, something that is a little bit special like Mulback's used to have, and my impression of this development is that it has none of those things. It's very large, it's very impersonal, will increase traffic, and won't be inviting for residents or visitors alike, and so I'd like you to reconsider the scale of this, and also consider what the feel of downtown will be for someone who is visiting, visiting Woodinville. When I, the other day I went into Edmonds, and, you know, Edmonds is a, you know, different sort of town, but I have to say, it was really a pleasant thing to go into Edmonds. It has its own special feel, own special character, and I can see why people live there and want to visit, and I really hope that Woodinville doesn't lose the inviting character that, that it has, so thank you.
Thank you. Denise Need.
Thank you, Denise Need, right outside city, or, city limits, so incorporated. I cannot speak as elegantly or as knowledgeably as the other three, but I wanted to make all those points again, that we really liked our downtown to be a welcoming place that people see besides another winery or another tasting room, another tasting room, another tasting room. It's really nice to be able to go out for some of the restaurants we have, but also having some sort of walkable place, like what's in front of Hagan. Getting so close to the road with all of these and getting so tall and getting more luxury is not good for the greater community when we could be more welcoming to those that cannot afford the five-bedroom, five-acre houses up in the hills, I'd like to have a more walkable city, walkable to actually buy a gallon of milk and not just another bottle of wine, and also that could be family-friendly, and I think more luxury apartments are not doing that. Our schools really, really need to be able to support families, and I feel like my neighborhood that used to have twenty families now has three families with kids in school because this is just a population, as you know, that they're not going to the public schools, there's not as many families, and they can't move into these areas, so I really want to encourage the growth by looking at populations that can't afford or currently be in a Woodinville address. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Gary Harris.
My name is Gary Harris, I live within the Woodinville city limits. I would like to go back in time a little bit. In two thousand twenty-one, when I was on the Woodinville city council, we had a signed DA with Mulbox, and then it seemed like, not very long after that, that that all blew up. In talking with not just one or two, but quite a few people in Woodinville, they asked me what in the dickens happened to Mulbox. To date, I have not had a satisfactory answer as to what happened with the Mulbox situation, and that makes me a little bit hesitant, a little skeptical about just saying, oh yeah, Green Partners, go ahead and build this monstrosity that you have outlined. I read the eighty-some pages that are in their agenda item tonight, and to me, their building looks like a prison block or a college dormitory facility. It does not look like Wooden Creek or District Flats, which I like. I don't like East Rail flats as much because things are built out to the street. I used to live in Redmond, I lived there for twenty-five years before I moved to Woodinville, been here for twelve years, and I quit going shopping in Redmond, going to restaurants in Redmond, when they went to their seventh story or whatever their height limit is, and you have the canyon effect. You drive down the road, you can't tell if you're going north, south, east, or west because you can't see the sun, you don't know where you are, and it is just another, I could be in New York, or I could be in some other city, but not, I don't want that for Woodinville. So I'm also very concerned, I think it's on page forty of their agenda item, they talk about the percentage of housing that is, quote, affordable, and whether that would be eighty percent or fifty percent or whatever, there, there's still blanks on that page that hasn't been filled out. I want to see numbers in there because some developers have a habit of weaseling out of their affordable units or building more units to justify their project, to what they say make it affordable, so this is certainly not complete, and as far as I'm concerned, it is certainly not acceptable. Thank you.
Okay, we have a couple of people signed up to comment virtually. First is Amanda Miller. Do we have Amanda on? No? No Amanda Miller. Next, Regina Gerbeau. I don't see that either. Okay, Ann Ashford. And last, Maggie Kempner. Okay, I think we lost them, okay. Thank you, that concludes our public comment period. Next we have Consent Calendar. Yes ma'am. Absolutely, come on up.
Thank you very much. My name is Tanya Milbrot, I live in unincorporated Woodinville, out by Cloud Lake Park, and I just wanted to, I am the lead organizer and creator of Woodinville Pride, and I wanted to discuss really quick some of the happenings today. As some of you know, I got a call from the city's permit office yesterday, letting me know that they had double-booked Wilmont Gateway Park. I just wanted to thank the Woodinville city council that helped us out today, you were very quick, jumping on calls and trying to work with us to find a resolution. I do think that we could work on the procedures and policies in place with renting out the parks and that application process to make it a little easier for people who organize events. We put our application in within a week of getting our funding, which would allow us to pay for the park rental and pay for the certificate of insurance and whatnot, and, but I totally understand the first-come, first-served basis and that the other organization got their application in. We are moving our event to the fourteenth, we thank you for giving us that opportunity, and we just wanted to say that all of my planning committee, we've been in lots of discussions today, it's been a very, very sensitive subject and a kind of a rough day, but we really respect the collaborative relationship that we have with the Woodinville city council, we appreciate the help, and we just look forward to that continuing in the future, so, thank you.
Thank you. Consent Calendar.
I was going to ask a question based on that last comment of staff. So the scheduling conflict, when permits come in, how did this happen, I guess is the, and how do we, more importantly, avoid it in the future? I know that moving an event is traumatic, particularly when you have funding and whatnot, how did it happen, how do we triage it, and then how do we prevent this from happening in the future?
Yeah, and I can put together kind of some written synopsis of the whole thing, that might go into more detail, but basically it was, we, we have quite an extensive policy in place for how special events are booked and reserved. This one was simply, one, the permit didn't come in as soon as I think one group would have liked, and then another group had already come in and, and applied for that same location, same dates and times, so by our policy, we have the first-come, first-served basis, there's some nuances there depending on events and types of events and stuff, but that's basically what it was, is one group had kind of got in there and reserved it, even though the other group had been planning on using that space at that time, just hadn't got the permit in, so I don't know that there's, we'll have to look at what the procedures and the policies are, I don't know that there's any immediate fatal flaws that identifying it, I think it was just a matter of timing, but we can certainly work on trying to make some of those expectations clear in our, in our public engagement opportunities.
Or at least have something, but, for the date being the first thing that we see when these permits come in, so we know if there's another date that comes in, something triggers on the software that says, that, but there's already some, a permit in, so that we could maybe let people know a little bit sooner rather than making people stress out and think that they don't get to have their event, so something along those lines, it'd be nice to have a little triage after that, thank you.
I move to accept that Consent Calendar is written.
Second.
A motion and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Seeing none, motion carries, thank you. That brings us to our first business item, business item, business item number eight, Green Partners LLC's application to amend figure twenty-one point four-two point zero four-zero, designating active and residential uses at the street level. Mr. Grumba.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council, bringing up my presentation, just give me one quick second. While I'm waiting for this, what we're going to do here is, I've got a couple of things just to kind of go over again what happened at our last meeting, and then I'm going to turn it over to Green Partners, and they're going to talk to you a little bit more about what they've done since that March eighteenth meeting, and then we can bring it back, and then we can talk about what, one of the main purposes of tonight is, and that's consideration of whether to put the code amendment on the planning commission's work plan. So as I mentioned, at the March eighteenth council meeting, we did an introduction to Green Partners' proposal for a new project called Midtown, which is to redevelop the old Mulback site of nineteen point two acres with new housing, commercial space, senior housing, and a hotel. What we have received is an application for a code amendment, and we also have received an application for a development agreement, and we have started reviewing the development agreement, but we haven't really dived into any super details or anything on that, and that's one of the reasons why in your packet you see a lot of blanks and stuff in there because we really haven't dived into the details on that yet. That's kind of what the next step will be after we start figuring out what we're going to do with the code amendment. At the March eighteenth, the main thing, what we were trying to do though, besides just introducing the council to this, was seek some preliminary input on the development agreement, that can then help further support us, and then as I mentioned, we actually did talk to you about potentially putting the code amendment on the planning commission's work plan on that meeting. Part of the discussion, some of the feedback we heard from you, this wasn't everything, this was just some of the highlights, but we heard basically about council wanting to see this project to go above and beyond the minimum design standards and to reflect our northwest wooden shape and form, which is a really foundational piece to Woodinville's identity and a big part of what our comp plan is based all around. There was also discussion about, don't push the buildings out against the streets, kind of heard some of that earlier in some of the comments, about trying to avoid the tunneling effect. There was also comments made about the timing on the benefit, and this being very important, and when we're talking about with benefits, we were talking about the affordable housing should be in the earlier phases as well as some of the infrastructure being built earlier rather than later in the process. Also comments made about providing ownership opportunities, and then also, which is also one of our things of our CBD zone, which is promoting active uses, which are uses that generally, or would generate high-foot traffic. So at the meeting, there were a lot of really good conversation took place, we took the input, and as I mentioned, I can summarize some of it here. City council at that time did decide to table action on the code amendment application until the project was further flushed out, and so Green Partners is here tonight to kind of talk about a little bit more of what they have flushed out with you, so Jason, if you want to come on up, they're going to hear and talk to you a little bit more about their project and what they've done since that March eighteenth meeting.
Hello, Honorable, Honorable City Council, thank you for your time today. I wanted to come back after the March eighteenth meeting to discuss in, you know, more detail about the project. Again, as Robert mentioned, today's voting action that's proposed, it's not in the development agreement, there's clearly a lot of work to be done, there's a lot of community input to be heard, we're here for that dialogue, we'll continue to be here for that dialogue, and what we'd like to do is just, you know, be more open about the project as we continue throughout this process. So today's vote is to simply clarify the ground floor amendment, what's allowed and what's not allowed, so that we can properly plan the project through the DA process and our planning process with the city of Woodinville and with the community in Woodinville. So today, I'd like to kind of highlight just three agenda items to cover, just give a basic project overview to get everyone up to speed with roughly what we're, what we're proposing in the development agreement at this time. I'll turn it over to Herbal Architecture to cover plan highlights today, in more detail on, you know, some of the building shape and form and the streetscapes that we're looking at doing, and then turn back to me to cover some public and economic benefits for the project, so, next slide. So, you know, just for starters, as Robert mentioned, here's the contacted, context of the site, there's about nine hundred feet of frontage on northeast one seventy-fifth street, the site goes all the way down past Wooden Creek to northeast one seventy-first, and then all the way east to a dead-end street currently, one thirty-ninth, that we're proposing to extend and connect to northeast one seventy-third street, which is just right along the north side of Wooden Creek Village, and that is essentially our southern boundary of, of most of the site. Next slide, please. This, this slide's not rendering very well, but what it says, it's essentially a nineteen-acre site. The way the roadway breaks down where it makes sense to connect to other public streets, it breaks the site into roughly five blocks to work with, and so what we're proposing just based on CBD zoning, based on the development bonuses that are in the city of Woodinville's code for development agreements, we could fit roughly thirteen hundred housing units, and that's a mix of all types of housing units, everything from apartments, townhomes, potentially condominiums, senior housing, it's, it's, what we're doing in the development agreement and the SEPA process is studying all of those uses kind of cohesively. In addition to that, we're looking at doing about eighty-nine thousand square feet of commercial space, and again, a mix of restaurants, retail shops, specialty space, and then the development agreement itself, what's so important about this is that it allows us to run this as a phased development. allows us to run this as a phased development site. So rather than a bunch of one offs on each of these blocks, we can have a cohesive agreement that covers everything, covers the whole site in a really consistent way, so that there's, it's just far more easier to plan and phase the development that way. What it also does enables the city to get public benefits. Without the development agreement, it's just, there's nothing in the zoning code specifically that speaks to this. And so I think it's a great tool that the city has to develop what these projects could become, and it enables this dialogue process that we have today. So, next slide, please. When we started looking at replanning the site, you know, obviously without molbacks in the project anymore, it's a total redo. What we wanted to do is say, you know, let's start at the ground floor, this is where most people are going to experience the project, and this is where it's going to really have the most impact. And I think in walking the site, in walking the surroundings and replanning the site, we thought it'd be incredibly important to provide really great retail at the corners, a retail inline where we feel it's appropriate. And then as you move south throughout the site, transition to what we're proposing currently as some residential housing, much like you see in Wooden Creek Village, just in the adjacent site next door, as you go south throughout the site, which of course then transitions to the creek area and then ag restricted zoning south of the city of Woodinville. In addition to providing the retail space, retail needs parking, retail needs good access and visibility. And so as soon as you enter the site, there's a vehicle access point within a block for all the retail, and then there's permeable pedestrian access through each block. What that does is it provides safety. People can easily enter the site, they can park, they can go to the retail, they can enjoy a night out, dining at one of the restaurants or shopping at one of the shops. And it really kind of promotes pedestrian safety as well. You think about if it's clear where people walk and where people go, and having retail at the corners and having that permeability mid-block, it promotes that connectivity throughout all the ground level as part of the site. And so what I'd like to do next, next slide, please, is turn it over to Chad from Herbal Architecture to talk more about the plan highlights that we've got in this project.
Thank you, Jason. My name is Chad Lorenz. I'm a principal at Herbal Architecture, and I want to thank you guys for hearing us tonight. Jason really stole my thunder on the previous slide, but if you don't mind, can we back up for one second? I just want to reiterate, sort of, there are a lot of thought that has gone into sort of the planning of this ground floor. In addition to us, there's also Coglin Porter Lundeen, who's the civil engineer, and then Hewitt Architects is a landscape architects who have been part of this. But we really took a really 30,000 foot level approach on this, and as Jason mentioned, it's extremely important for the viability of retail to have clear access to the site. You know, people come via cars, via walking, and we really wanted to make sure that it was easy, clear, and that there's great access points. And some of these green arrows that you see are also plazas between buildings that once you are in the parking garage, you exit into a plaza, and you're on one at either 175th or 174th, which are kind of our concentrated retail streets. Okay, next slide. Okay, one more. So we're going to take you a little bit on a tour, and I want to just orient you to where you are on the site. So we're starting at De Young Park. You can see the trellis on the kind of the street corner, so you're looking at 137th and 175th. And this is sort of the corner view that you'll see, and you'll see sort of the scale of the building that we're talking about. You'll see the retail spaces that extend out beyond the upper level step backs of the residential. The goal here is to create a really vibrant street level experience along 175th. Next slide. Some of the highlights, you know, active uses, the master plan promoting this vibrant downtown Main Street experience, connections not only across from De Young, but the next block down as well. So there's just easy access all around into and out of this development. So there's, you know, patronization of all the retail in downtown, not just this development. And then the use of materials, again, we're at a conceptual phase, there's a lot of dialogue that will go on, but we're really using the Woodinville Downtown Vision Guide as our guide to the look and feel of these buildings. So you can see broad overhangs at the roof, natural pallet materials, the ground floor set off with also very natural materials in general. And again, we're going to continue to talk about this throughout the development of this project. Next slide. Okay, so now you're looking east down 175th, you get a much broader view of the whole streetscape. And I want to kind of point out a few things here. We hear this a lot about the sort of quaint downtown, where, you know, there's a lot of struggle between urban and, you know, kind of a, you know, rural more feel. And so one of the things that we can do at the street level is really break up the ground floor with different texture, material, color, and encourage individual retail spaces to come in and really put their stamp on that space. That's what I think people love, that's why they want to go down, they want to go to patronize, they want to, you know, window shop, and they want to, you know, experience these spaces, you know. U Village is a very popular example of this, where people go, and we're trying to recreate that at street level. And Hewitt has done an amazing job, which you'll see in future slides, of really creating a streetscape that people can enjoy, not just with the shopping, but places to hang out, to eat, to, you know, have conversation, to sit, to gather. So, next slide. There's been a lot of talk about the width and the canyon effect, and I just want to be very clear. So we have about 27 feet from the curb edge to the storefront, and it modulates a little bit, so give or take a couple of feet. 10 and a half feet of that is a planting strip, and I think it's 15 and a half is sidewalk. So that's a very wide pedestrian realm at the ground floor. In addition to that, when you get up past the first level, those residential are set back another between five and 12 feet, and it modulates as well. So there's a healthy step back of the second floor up to the fifth floor that really is also utilized as patio space for residents, and, you know, they can plant up there, and they, you know, they're really kind of part of that sort of environment down at the streetscape level. Next slide. So now we're going to go to 174th, so we're blocks south now running parallel to 175th. This is a similar but very different street. So as Jason mentioned, there's a concentration of retail at that street level as well, looking to get restaurants on the corners with kind of complementary retail in between. There's a little chicane in the road that kind of slows down traffic, there's parking on both sides. Really a similar but very different vibe, a slower street, a more kind of pedestrian-oriented street where people can cross back and forth across the street, perhaps events can happen on there, and really becoming kind of the center of this development. Next slide. Highlighting things here, now, this has even more width at the ground floor in terms, or streetscape, which Hewitt has done a really amazing job of putting planting strips. There's plenty of room for outdoor dining on this level, pedestrians, lots of different options for storefronts that really can kind of enrich this environment. There's catenary lights across the top, so, you know, thinking about lighting, about not just daytime but nighttime. So a lot of streetscape activation, low speed pedestrian kind of first atmosphere at this street. So, next slide. So now we've moved to the end of 174th, we're looking north to 175th at 138th. And we have a very premier retail corner at the terminus of 174th on the ground floor. And now you kind of can really focus a little bit on the upper stories, so now bringing in the residential kind of component to this. I think I'll go to the next slide, which has some of the bullet points here. As Jason mentioned, there's a variety of different housing types, from, you know, the market rate, the affordable, the senior, but also studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms, places where families can actually also rent or buy in this location. So Jason's on a really good job of making sure that there is that sort of variety of an opportunity for different demographics and people, what they're looking for, but all kind of focused around, you know, patronizing and being part of this sort of great urban environment. There'll be community activities here, and I think that the, you know, the concept images and stuff are what we really envisioned for this to feel like on a, you know, nice day here in Woodinville. So, next slide. So this is the last slide for me, and as we kind of back up now down 138th, as Jason mentioned, we're sort of transitioning more into even a quieter area. Go to the next slide with the bullet points. So what you're seeing here is sort of ground floor residential units, these would be sort of two-story units, so you have a comfortable living space on the ground floor, your sleeping space up above. These people would have outdoor patios that would spill out, and it's just sort of behind the retail, as you can see in the plan. This is just, again, a different opportunity for kind of urban living. These guys will really enjoy sort of the opportunities and the proximity to all this like, you know, really great retail that's right out their doorstep. But it really provides sort of a transition as you move even further south to kind of down where there's sort of townhome units and things, and really just, it's a perfect sort of setup. There's very broad streetscape there, so, you know, there's some defensible space for them, so there's very comfortable living at that ground floor. And again, great for families and, you know, couples, anybody who might want to sort of this type of living. Next slide, I think this is the last one. So this is coming back to 174th. This is sort of a dust shot, what 174th looked at at night, with the lights on and all the streetscape active, and the retail spaces open for business. So with that, I'll turn it back to Jason.
Great, thank you, Chad. So I wanted to talk again about public and economic benefits today. Of course, with the development agreement process, this becomes a really big topic. I think the city of Woodinville's made it clear that whenever a developer comes with a project, they expect public benefits to come with that project, and we're all in on that. We want to have that conversation. Next slide, please. So today, I just wanted to kind of highlight four that we think about in the context of this project. What are the direct benefits to Woodinville in, written in stone in the development agreement? What does construction do for a project of this size and scale? Let's take a look at housing, how much, you know, units count, what does that mean? And then when we talk about affordable, what does that mean in the city of Woodinville? And then commercial and retail, with the amount of commercial, retail space we're proposing, what could that potentially mean in sales and in different spaces for businesses downtown? Next slide, please. So when we look at direct benefits, I think there's really kind of two that are really just directly to the city of Woodinville. There's sort of upfront in infrastructure and public benefits, and then there's ongoing local government revenue that the city of Woodinville will accrue over a very long period of time. Upfront, it's really heavy on infrastructure. We've got four roads and a bridge on this site that would be totally brand new, it's where roads don't exist, and it creates a lot of connectivity downtown that is currently lacking for a huge swath of downtown. And so with the project, with the development agreement, the developer signs up to deliver that public infrastructure for the city of Woodinville. And in addition to that, there's frontage and sidewalk improvements for every square inch of wherever development occurs that fronts a public street. And then within the plan, there's ample opportunities for open space. So everything from the Wooden Creek Restoration Project, so we would restore the currently really degraded condition of Wooden Creek on the site. We would add a huge restoration buffer on both sides of the creek. There's enough space for a little pocket park that could be programmed with the community. We're currently engaged with a couple groups that are keenly interested in doing this. And then throughout the site, in public plazas, retail plazas, public space, we're here to engage on what that could look like at the ground floor. And then ongoing, of course, you know, growth and new housing and new business, just the real estate part of it comes with some significant benefits. So if you look at the build out period of, you know, the five to seven years and then ongoing revenue, you know, at full build out, it's about a million dollars per year to the city of Woodinville. So you look at the fiscal impact of these projects, and it's very positive, and it's a very positive long term. Next slide, please. No one likes to have construction next door. It's disruptive, it's messy, it can be loud, but it's a job creator. It just is. And once you're done with that phase, you know, what you've created is there for the whole community to enjoy during that messy phase. Direct construction jobs on a project of this scale is about 600 to 800 per year. So it's a lot, it drives a lot of local spending downtown as well, to help offset the pain of growth and the pain of that construction phase. Next slide, please. And when we look at housing for a scale of this, you know, the project of this scale, what does 1,300 units mean? It means about housing for 3,000 people. So, you know, all living downtown, multiple housing types, multiple income qualification brackets, for sale, rental, senior, the whole gamut is really on the table here. When we talk about affordable housing for the high end, so assuming it's all 1,300 units, that 10% is 130 units, well, that houses about 300 people. And they can income qualify through the city's MFTE program, which is run by a regional affordable housing coalition called ARCH. And then the economic impact from residents is truly significant. People spend roughly a third of what they spend in their household locally. So if you add 3,000 residents to downtown Woodinville, and then you take roughly what people spend in the Seattle region, that means about $41 million of year into the city of Woodinville's local economy, just from those new households spending locally and buying locally. Next slide, please. And then finally, on commercial and retail, if we look at, you know, what's the overall commercial breakdown that we've got planned? Again, I think, you know, it's going to be a mix, and we're studying, you know, for the purposes of traffic impact and for the purposes of the development agreement, we're studying roughly this mix. If you assume those space mixes and generally the sales that you see regionally per square foot, it yields about a total estimated sales of $60 million per year in downtown Woodinville with this project. And then ongoing retail and service jobs, about 400 to 450 with that amount of commercial and retail space downtown. Next slide, please. And so let's turn it back to what today is about, what the agenda item is. Basically, our request is, it's very simple. This isn't a vote on the development agreement, it's not even a vote on updating what we've asked for in the map ordinance. It's simply asking that we study this ordinance and the development agreement with Planning Commission. They can decide what to do, we're not in a huge rush, they shouldn't be either. And why that's important is that this part of the code, an amendment is simply required for a project of this size. If you look at the little outline on the map, that's our project, there's a lot missing. You know, there's roads that aren't there currently. So where the map doesn't specify, where downtown streets don't currently exist, and in addition to that, the code amendment's very specific about if a development is proposing any ground floor residential, it has to be authorized through a development agreement with this ordinance. So again, I think it's not a vote on the DA, it's not a vote on the project, it's asking Planning Commission to study this alongside the development agreement, so we can have a consistent planning process. And we're here for the dialogue, we're here to have that discussion. We'd love to meet with Planning Commission and go through the steps necessary for this. So, next slide, please. That concludes the remarks that we had prepared for the slides. I'll turn it back over to Robert, but we're available for Q and A, of course, on any of these topics.
Just before we go to Mr. Grumbach, any questions for Jason? Councilmember Edwards.
Thank you. In terms of dialogue, at the meeting last time, I know what concern that was raised was about affordable housing in terms of the phases of when it would be implemented. I was wondering if you had any further discussion about when those 10% would be implemented in your phase plan, because I know that was a concern that was brought up last time.
Yep, sure. So I think in the development agreement process, we had a little bit of that in the last agreement where it was specific phases. We're open to the same type of approach for that. So whether it's like a specific So whether it's like a specific phase, uh, or a site, um, you know, we've got some ideas about uses across the site where, where it could be, you know, applicable, where it couldn't be. And then I think in addition to that, of course, the city's got a great incentive program of multiple percentages. So there's a 10% program, there's a 20% program. I think, you know, we, we as a developer, we're, we've expressed that we can be kind, we, we can be flexible about where and what, and I think we'd, we'd love to continue that dialogue in, in the process.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate that last conversation, the main focus was hoping to get as many of those, uh, as soon as possible in the process, if they're water-approved, so that, um, people would have access to the affordable housing, uh, as soon as possible, so that they can get the most benefit and able to have more affordable housing in our city. So thank you for that conversation.
Deputy Mayor Randall.
Hey, how you doing tonight? Thank you for the presentation. Uh, these do look a little bit better than what we saw in the show and I think that's what we're getting a lot of reaction from, especially from our residents. Uh, my question to you is, uh, the ground floor residential that we're discussing whether or not to send this to, uh, planning. How, and if, if it does, how much does it actually affect the capacity of the number of units that you will be able to produce?
For the, for the site south of the creek, um, we're looking at a program that would be roughly 30 townhomes. We thought it'd be important for that part of the site. It, it's just, it, it looks like a great, you know, uh, townhome site, so 30 there. And then on the ground floor, on the central block where we're showing it now, um, it, it's less than that. I think it's like 15 to 20. So it, it's not a lot. It doesn't move the needle, you know, like, uh, it doesn't move the needle that much when you look at like the number of units. But I think what's important to remember is that, um, occupied residential at the ground floor is where, where it's appropriate is so much better than vacant retail that's just never going to lease because of, because of where it is and how it's configured. And so I think, you know, what, what we do and, and what we want to do is we want to have that discussion with Planning Commission, you know, where is it appropriate, where is it not appropriate? You know, there, I think there are phenomenal examples downtown, especially when you look at, you know, Wooden Creek Village, uh, where you drive along Village Square Drive and it's just done so well. You've got little porches and stoops. That's exactly the kind of thing that I think we would, we would want to pursue in ours.
With those townhomes in mind, would they possibly offer an opportunity for, uh, uh, ownership in terms of townhome ownership within those locations?
On the, on the mall, on the, on the larger multi-story structures?
The ones you were talking about by actually creating the, the change that we'd have to do? It would allow those townhomes to, to provide an ownership opportunity or is that not within your thinking?
It, it is partly. So one of, one of the proposed changes to the ordinance map is that southern site currently there's no, it's not specified on the map. Uh, so we would need that part of the amendment updated, um, to, to offer even that for, as a for-sale solution.
Any other questions for Jason? I got a couple. So you mentioned earlier condominiums. Is that still in the possibility of the plan? Because we've been working as a council, um, to change the condo liability laws so that we can get more developers to build condominiums, which are by nature of the construction more cost-effective and you can build affordable units easier than stacked, stacked units you can build more economically than, than townhomes. Um, and then, um, I wanted to see if you could expand on how you go about determining, determining retail needs. Um, you know, the, the free market determines a lot of that, but, you know, in Woodinville, I don't know the number of wine tasting venues that Woodinville can support. We have a lot. I, I don't know the upper limits of that number. Feels like we're getting closer to that. And then at one time you s- you mentioned, um, a, a grocery store. Is that still possibly in the plans? Uh, anyway, I just gave you, I gave you three there, but, uh, if you'd care to answer that.
Mayor, I can ask you for the first one again.
Uh, the condominiums, um, uh, what, because you hadn't talked about those before and on the previous project, now you are, and I'm just wondering if, if the changes at the state level on the condo liability laws influenced, um, your decision to include that in the project?
It, it did and it's, you know, it's one of the things I think that keeps coming up, um, in the city of Woodinville. I mean, you guys are studying missile, missing middle housing, uh, and part of the housing action plan is, is right up that alley of like, how do you provide, um, for-sale opportunities that are achievable? The median home price in Woodinville, single-family home, is 1.8 million dollars. So you need, you need to make over $400,000 per year to qualify for a mortgage to buy a for-sale, single-family home in Woodinville, uh, at that price. Apartments, um, you know, there's a huge mix, right? If, if you're talking about something, something comparable for square footage, it's hard, it's hard to find like large three-bed units, but, you know, two beds, you know, it's around a thousand dollars a month. So the, it, it's just, it's totally, uh, apples and oranges, but what do you do for people here, right? So I think it's important that as, as, as we develop our project, we've asked our, our land use council, what has changed? Can you explain in detail, um, you know, and can, can we talk to our insurance companies? So we're, we're actively studying it right now. Um, the law has had an impact. You're starting to see the first few condominium projects actually under construction on the east side. There's one in downtown Kirkland, it's at the old US Bank site. So we're following that really closely and then talking to other developers, you know, non-tower sites basically, like, what are you seeing? How is this viable? We're, we're, we're totally open to exploring that in the plan, uh, and I think we should.
I, I appreciate that. Something we worked hard on, uh, with the state on that, so I'm, I'm, I'm glad to see that's making an impact. The next one was, uh, how do you determine your retail needs and go about recruiting that or determine what retail, uh, would go in the project? Because, you know, I mean, y- again, we have a lot of wine tasting venues, we have, you know, the public has expressed an interest in having different shops to, you know, go to and, and different types of restaurants and clothing stores and things like that.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of it at this phase, it was kind of a two-step. One was the discussion we had earlier about how do we right-size retail and, and retail parking? It's, it's a little bit of sort of a maximizing function. You could think about it like you've really kind of got the ground floor space where it's viable and then across the site, you know, you're, you've got your corners, you've got your inline, you've got sort of, you know, and then, and then planning sort of the retail space itself as a whole and then where can you fit the parking? And so what we've done with studying the site is looking at, okay, let, we, we got to our roughly 90,000 square feet with that process at, you know, with the parking. And then a further breakdown, you know, what's the market mix look like typically of current space occupation in, in Woodinville? A lot of that is to study the impacts. So the mix that we've got currently is, you know, the mix you see, I think it's, it's probably subject to change just once each phase is open and, and retail needs are pretty fickle. You know, some years it's like all the fast casual, uh, they're all leasing and then other years they're not. So i- it, it's really kind of dependent on that, but I think that the prudent thing to do is, is think about that mix in the, in the context of like the full site and then as each phase would come online, it's really kind of subject to those market forces. One thing that I have heard is, you know, it's tough to find achievable space for small businesses. What we've seen on some other projects regionally is if you offer not just the two, 3,000 square foot suite spaces, uh, but go, go down further, go down like south of 1,000 square feet, finish it out as a white box space, you know, with, with a restroom, uh, and, and you provide sort of like this, you know, more achievable level of commercial space where a small business or, or craft operation or something like that can actually have a shot at commercial space. So that's something we, we'd love to explore with, with our site.
And then my last question was the grocery store. So we recently were able to attract, um, Trader Joe's to Woodinville. Does that change the, your decision-making on, uh, providing another grocery store downtown?
Uh, you know, it, I, I can't say we're off the hook now. We talked to them, uh, with the prior project, uh, and, you know, it, it, it progressed a little bit. We, we didn't really have the space in our first phase. It was so focused on, we had a little bit of space in 175th and, and the rest of it would just, you know, the focus was mallbacks. Um, so, uh, I'm, I'm happy they finally found a home in Woodinville. I think it's a great additional option. Um, we've got a few spaces in this current plan set aside where you, you could do another grocery store of that scale, for sure.
Councilmember Best Campbell.
So in the presentation, you mentioned both a, a senior living facility and a hotel, but you didn't show us where it would be on the map. Can you show it to us so we see where it is?
Uh, yeah, sure. Um... So, um, on, on the west side of the site, the far northwest, um, that's, that site, that's what we, we've been studying for the hotel site. Right now, there's currently a warehouse on the site, um, and we're, we're kind of thinking, you know, with the SOM opening, that's going to take up a lot of the supply in the house, in the hotel market. Uh, and so I think our plan is to, you know, as that opens and as it performs, see how that goes. Um, it would, it would most likely be a later phase in this project. Uh, and in addition to that, I think, um, the warehouse, we are exploring an adaptive reuse project, um, to, to, you know, breathe some life into that building and, and, and open it up, uh, as the rest of the site develops. For senior housing, it's really hard to say. We've been speaking to multiple operators and the range of, of, of interest is, is, is quite large, you know, everything from like 150 units to 300 units. There are a lot of different types of senior housing, uh, and, and the operators are all a little different. So I, I, I don't have like a good answer today on what that exactly is going to be, uh, but we are talking to, to several different groups. Um, and then the idea would be to progress, you know, um, progress and, and pick one to, to be our, our partner or, or sell them a portion of the site.
So with those two, um, projects within the major development, how is it that we went from the previous development agreement of 370,000 square feet of retail space available to this proposal, which is 89,000 square feet? Not all of that is coming back to us in terms of housing because we had 1,200 units in the previous development agreement and only 1,300 here. So where is that square footage going? I mean, we're 20% of what the previous development agreement said.
Yeah, one, one of the things we've, we've done is, is we've looked at, if we're reducing the commercial square footage, we can add to the housing requirement or to the housing program on the site. So for, roughly from the prior plan, it's adding 100 housing units, it's adding about 80 hotel rooms to the overall plan. Um, and then, you know, I think what's important to think about for commercial space too is it seems like a very high number in the prior plan. Mallbacks was huge and the space that we were looking at moving them into was, was also huge. And it's just different types of space, right? Like, um, the, the retail intensity that you would have in a restaurant is just per square foot is, it's much different than, than a, than a mallbacks type operation. And so what we, what we try to do with this plan is, is, is right-size the retail space at the ground floor so that we've got a lot of flexibility throughout the site and we can add housing and additional hospitality space.
Um, and then going, going through, again, I did a side-by-side of the development agreement that's from 2021, 2022, um, to this current one. And what I see is a chasm between retail sales tax that was previously promised to this council, that this council agreed to, versus what we're getting now. And again, it is fractional. We're getting less now than we got from a development agreement that this council agreed to. Since then, we've lost mallbacks and I would be remiss if I didn't ask this, why should we trust this development agreement now when there was a time when we trusted the development agreement a few years ago? What's changed?
I mean, it, it's a fair question, like, plans don't always work. Um, it was a really terrible, uh, way that what happened with the prior project. Um, you know, I think it's something that we're trying to find, what's the right solution going forward for this site and for, and for downtown? Um, you know, there's, there's only a certain amount of commercial space that's going to be viable, uh, and so what we're trying to do with this new plan is focus on what's going to be viable, what's going to absorb, what's going to lease, where should it be? And I think the other thing that, you know, it, when you talk about impacts, you can't have sort of like unlimited retail space. I mean, it's, it's hard for a downtown to do, um, you know, like a, like a, like a large enclosed mall or like something that you would see, um, in a much denser setting, uh, with housing right next door. And so I think, you know, with this plan, um, what we've looked at doing is like, okay, can we add to the other components while removing, um, some of the commercial space that we had in the prior plan?
So I guess just one more...
Councilmember, that's, that's five minutes, you have another, uh, opportunity. Uh, Councilmember Evans.
Great, thank you. Um, unfortunately, some members of our community have been spreading around the previous version that you brought that was more of like the space planning. So thank you for bringing this today because I think it's really important that people know that that was simply a planning exercise that is required as you go through this process. That was not ever the vision and I know last time I told you when you were here that it looked like a prison block. So thank you for bringing back these renderings. I know the, um, the idea of green space is really important. People really love that about the former development agreement. Can you help us understand, you went through a bunch of numbers in terms of the setbacks. How do those setbacks, um, like if I were to look at e- East Rail Flats, how do they, um, measure up to that? Are they further back or are they about equal?
Yeah, they're, they're significantly further back in what we're proposing. The, the East Rail Flats project that was just delivered, um, I think it's like a 12-foot public sidewalk and then, um, the building is, you've got the retail and then upper stories. There's modulation to, to break up the mass, which, you know, it's a really, it's, it's a really good approach. Um, what we're proposing on ours is a little bit more setback and so when you look at sort of the, the, um, the retail frontage, we're expanding the landscape strip beyond standard. We're, we're proposing to expand the sidewalk beyond standard, uh, for northeast 175th. The retail would be right up against that expanded sidewalk and then we would further step back the upper stories behind that, so much more than just modulation, roughly the five to seven feet that Chad was talking about, um, as, uh, for, for all units and then, and then facade modulation beyond there, that would be a few feet, just depending on how the unit lays out.
Okay, and if I remember right, and I'd have to go back to my notes, you're set back about 20-some feet versus 12?
The, the upper stories would be about 30, 35 feet from the curb line and then the retail would be about 27.
So the upper stories are almost three times further back from the street then?
Yeah, it, it's a really significant setback versus, versus, um, the, the East Rail project.
Okay. Sometimes it's really hard to tell from renderings, so it's, thank you for those. Um, and then back to some of the comments that were made before and maybe Mr. City Manager, this might be for you as well. Um, so tonight, what, we're not voting on a development agreement. We're not voting on what this looks like. We're talking about what, giving an option to be able to go into discussions with Planning Committee? Is that what we're really talking about tonight?
Yeah, and, and thank you. Uh, Robert, I think we'll cover it, but yes, basically it is that the request and, and the requested action, suggested action before council this evening is simply adding this code amendment to Planning Commission's work plan for them to start working through and bring, eventually bring a recommendation back to council on specifically the code amendment, as, uh, Jason mentioned, to, that would allow ground floor residential via development agreement. So the map that was in the presentation, uh, that map has existed in several forms over the years. Uh, it's been amended by several projects over the years because, as was mentioned, it was never a complete map for the downtown and certainly that becomes more of the case as more new roads are added that don't exist, weren't contemplated, didn't exist when that map was last changed. So it is not a, a vote on the code amendment tonight, is not a vote on a development agreement. Obviously, there's going to be a lot of work on both of those. This is simply putting this code amendment request on, on Planning Commission for them to start deliberating that, the appropriateness of that request.
Okay, and I think that's a really important piece of moving this forward because again, we're talking about currently nonexistent roads. This is a lot of, um, a, a lot of place that we just really haven't thought about from a code perspective. But if we put this on the work plan, we're not saying that this is definitely going in. We're just saying now you have the opportunity to have that discussion and to work through a development agreement, including public benefits and all that kind of stuff, right?
Right, that's, that's correct. This starts, starts kind of firming up what that project could look like so that we can start having those conversations about the development, agreeing all the pieces that flow from that. But right now, Green Partners can't determine what that project looks like or, or its viability because they don't know if that ground floor residential is allowed or not because our code is silent on that at the moment.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Edwards.
Yeah, thank you also for the renderings. It's really helpful to understand this.
It's really helpful to understand this. One question I do have is, I know when seeing those renderings, one question that does come to mind when speaking with residents specifically is the impact on transportation. And I, at this point in time, I was wondering what discussions you've all had about the transportation improvements in terms of timing of when they would be implemented in terms of this project, in terms of your phasing project?
Yes, thank you for the question. It's, it's something I, I was hoping to cover actually in the slides too, but I forgot, so thank you for reminding me. The way the site kind of breaks up, there's sort of, 138th is, you know, a dividing line north-south. That's a, that would be a, a public street. It's got a left turn signal on to Northeast 175th. It's, it's kind of a big piece of infrastructure. And then, it goes all the way down to Northeast 171st, crosses Wooden Creek. So, it's, what we're thinking for the site and the phasing is, you've sort of got like an east phase of infrastructure and a west phase of infrastructure. So, anything, any time we would develop or start developing a site on east of 138th, we would complete the 139th Ave extension, the 138th extension, all the way down to 171st, that's east. And then, any time we would do any of, any of the, the blocks west of 138th, that touches, of course, northeast, northeast 174th and then 137th Avenue. So, that, all of, all of those streets would get cut in for each of those spaces. So, you can think about it as like either side of 138th, if either of those get, get, you know, get developed, that you would, we would, in the development agreement, specify that those need to get delivered.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yeah. I'm concerned about the retail sales tax. Just every, every project is giving us less than what, what was there before. Is there any consideration? Could you possibly add more retail? Maybe a second floor retail, so you have two-level restaurants or something like that? And understand that it's not just restaurants that we need. Hardware store, you know, just general, you know, kitchen-type stuff, Best Buy, any, anything that would pump up the revenue a little bit because the 590,000 is much less than what was projected with the previous. So, I, I don't know. I, I'm, I'm reluctant to go forward with it with a reduction of the retail that every dollar that is taken away from that area is permanently taken away and has to come from another part of town. And that could ultimately be, you know, our residents are going to have to pay more. And that's something that isn't best for the community. So, would like to see a little bit more.
I mean, I, I think it's something that we can study. Service-type retail lends itself really well to second-floor spaces. We haven't studied that in this plan, but it's, it's something that we certainly could with, when we study this development agreement with Planning Commission and the ground floor ordinance with Planning Commission. So, I think, yeah, we're, we're open to exploring that further.
Councilmember Wes Campbell.
So, I've, I've yet to hear the justification for the additional first-floor requirements. So, what you're saying is that we need to have a couple more blocks of first-floor residential allowed that will give us 100 extra units. We just passed an ordinance that opened up general business, turned it into East Frame mixed-use. We have residential, we've met our targets. Why do we need to build it here? Tell me why you think we need to build it here and why it makes sense in our retail core and not a little further out.
I mean, I think we're, we're, we're looking at where retail's viable on the site with the new plan. It, it's, it's going to change as we go through the process. But what we've put and proposed in the development agreement is what we think is going to be viable. I think it's also important to recognize that wherever we can add housing and whenever we can add housing of multiple formats, that's great. That's what we want. This region is in a housing crisis. It really is. And I think it's important that we provide multiple types of spaces, such as walk-up apartments in a downtown, much like you already see in Wooden Creek Village, where they just lend themselves to a certain type of, 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 in, in our case, buyer or renter for those types of units.
And what is, so, the research that you did for the previous development agreement, which says that you could manage 390,000 square feet, what metrics changed from the analysis you did then to now? It's, it's a huge discrepancy. What changed?
Well, I mean, one is not having mallbacks in the plan. That changed. In addition, the commercial space that's quoted in the old plan, that, that includes the hotel, so, so we're taking that away. And we're, we're, we're proposing to make an even larger hotel. So, if you look at apples-to-apples, it's, it's, it's not as much of a change on overall commercial square footage. And then, what we're able to do when we take out some of the commercial, we're able to add housing. And it's housing that would be able to add to the number that's of, of all types, for sale, rental, potential condominium. And then, that would also be included in whatever required affordable housing that we put in the new agreement.
One question about the hotel, actually. So, what research have you done about amenities nearby that would draw people to the hotel? What type of things nearby draw people to stay in that hotel versus, let's say, the SOM?
I mean, downtown Woodinville is great. And this is a, you, you go along 175th, it's like America's Main Street, right? It's only going to get better. I think it's, it's wonderful what some of these projects have delivered to downtown. There are all types of, you know, stay requirements people have, like families traveling with their, with their kids to go to youth sports. You know, of course, someone enjoying wineries or enjoying Woodinville for a weekend. You know, someone potentially working near Woodinville or, or in Woodinville for a job that's like a month or a week. And then, of cour-, you know, the corporate travel. There, there's just all types of, of travel. And I think, you know, in the past, we've looked at, you know, hotel market studies, Woodinville is actually kind of a broad mix of those travelers. It's, it's not just wineries. It's not just sort of the, the weekend stay. It, it truly is a broad mix. The Hampton Inn is a great example, just north of here. It is like 98% occupied on the weekends. And then, during the week, they do, they do really well. And so, I think the SOM and then, you know, other hotel interests, I know there's a courtyard that's proposed. It's responding to, you know, some pretty robust travel trends that you're, you're seeing here on the east side. So, I think it's a really positive thing. And in addition, you know, hotels really help city revenue. The city does have a, a, a tax, a lodging tax that, that pays directly into the city budget to help with additional visitors beyond that.
Councilmember Evans.
Thank you. So, the 390,000 square feet, so that included the hotel. So, about how much is the hotel?
I think in our prior plan, we were looking at like, it was just shy of like 100,000 or so.
And now, what are you estimating? I know it's not final, but-
Yeah, it would be, if it, you know, the, the size that we would look at, it would be probably like, call it round numbers, 150.
Okay. And I know the mallback space was not all retail. Some of it was greenhouse space, some of it was, you know, storage space, that kind of stuff. So, if we were to estimate about what the retail was, if I remember right, I think it was somewhere around 25,000 square feet that was dedicated to retail and the rest of it was more like growing and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, the, the retail space, you could think about it as sort of like front-of-house and back-of-house. So, back-of-house was roughly half of the proposed space. That's included in that commercial square footage that we had in the prior plan because it is commercial. And then, the front-of-house, the other half of the roughly 150,000-square-foot space that was proposed previously, there wasn't that interior component that, you're right, it was, it was about 25,000 square feet. And then, outdoor walking areas, and then the greenhouses themselves, which are about 20,000 square feet. So, it, it's just, it, it's, it is hard to do apples-to-apples because it's just, just very different types of spaces.
Yeah, and, and the greenhouse space, I just want to put that out there. That, that's more production. It's not, that's not bringing, that's not a business with a cash register making sales tax. That's, you know, growing plants to sell, but it's not, it's not a whole bunch of extra businesses that are there. So, I, I just, I think that's a really important distinction because it's not apples-to-apples. We can't just look at the exact number that was there before and now because the use that's going to be had is really, really different. Is that correct?
Yeah, that, that's exactly right. And I think, in addition to that, like if you look at, what is the productivity of that space on a, on a sales-per-square-foot basis? You know, and we're, we're basically just taking metro averages of, of what they could do, assuming this new space. So, we haven't run the analysis of, in the prior project, what truly is that sales-per-square-foot we were, we were looking at? It's, it, we could certainly put that analysis together, but using the number of the, of the roughly 400,000 square feet of commercial versus this plan, it's, it's not apples-to-apples whatsoever.
Okay, thank you. And again, I just want to reiterate, Mr. City Manager, if you can just keep me honest. We are not voting to say, uh-huh, this just goes through. We're just saying, let's study it, let's look at it, let's really expand the space and let's create a plan that can really work and be viable. I know, working extensively with the Chamber of Commerce, there's a lot of businesses that are struggling to stay in business right now. I know many of our wineries are really on the edge. And so, I think we have to be really careful to balance great commercial space. And I love that you're going to take a look at affordable commercial. That is a huge priority of mine, especially for our makers, our creators, our growers. They need smaller spaces where they can have that interaction but not have to, you know, have 1,000 or 2,000 square feet that they can't support economically. So, I would really love to see those. And they can be the fun businesses, right? Like a little chocolatier kind of tucked in. It's those things that make it sticky. And so, I'm, I'm definitely supportive of adding this to the work plan so that we can explore the option because I think it's important to continue to have this dialogue, especially as the economics around us are continuing to change.
Councilmember Arndt.
Thank you. I've mostly been listening to your presentation and the questions of my fellow council members tonight. I think there's been a lot of good points raised. I, there was one thing said in public comment that we had been taking an ad hoc approach to kind of where our, our street-level residential versus our retail would be in our city. It's come up in different projects and we keep discussing it. But I would really love to see a systematic look by our Planning Commission at the entire downtown area, including the new streets that are proposed in this development, the new streets that we know are coming in with other developments across our downtown so that we have a systematic idea of how much retail versus residential we want in our city center. I, I know there's been a lot of points about where is that tipping point between too much empty retail space and not enough sales tax revenue for the city? That's a really important question. And I would love the Planning Commission to take a look at this project and the entire city center in a systematic review and update this ordinance about ground-level residential so that we, as a city, are planning for the entire city systematically. So, I think that's where I stand on this one. I appreciate the renderings, I appreciate the updates, and I appreciate that this is an ongoing conversation, that none of this is chiseled in stone and that we still have an opportunity to negotiate on these finer points. And I think part of negotiating is continuing the conversation. And so, I would, I would push this to the Planning Commission to have a really thoughtful approach to what our city needs. Yes, we need housing. Yes, we need sales tax. What is the right balance for us? So, I, I would propose not just looking at it for this particular set of streets, but across our city center.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yeah. I think we've provided a fair amount of input and I think it needs to be looked at again, not by Planning Commission. The Planning Commission, right now, is mostly, well, we might as well just keep talking about it. Couple councilmembers were removed from assignments in those positions. And we have qualified and good planner, Planning Commission candidates that were handpicked, other candidates were handpicked for, for political expediency. So, I think you're going to get the same, you're going to get the same review in Planning Commission as you're getting right here. I think maybe go back, take a look at some of the suggestions about increasing some of the retail space, looking at, you know, options of how to up, update the sales revenue projection out of that space, what we can do, different mix of retail, different types of retail. I, I think that's necessary. I'm not sure you're going to get anything different from the Planning Commission. And we'll come right back and we'll still be talking about the same issues, debating. So, maybe clean up the, the input and come back. And maybe we do a joint presentation or do something first before it goes to Planning Commission because I don't think it's ready.
So, I'd like to address that. Nobody was removed from Planning Commissions. We, we vote as a council on committee assignments and that was what was done here. Secondly, Planning Commission exists to, Planning Commission exists to do a deeper dive into land use. And that's what we're talking about here. So, it's more than appropriate, in my opinion, for the Planning Commission to take a deeper dive on that. That's why the Commission absolutely exists. I, a couple of things I think is often lost is that, and we talked about this, I think, last meeting and I verified that, you know, we, we have a, a height ordinance. It's 57 feet downtown. And that's roughly four stories if you have a 20-foot commercial space. Developers, if they own the property, they can build to that height and the city can't really, other than enforce design standards and, and codes and building permits. There's not, there's not a whole lot that the city can do to stop that. So, working with a developer is one way, and in, in my opinion, the best way. We have a state mandate that requires us to plan for affordable housing. And I think you mentioned it very well. We have a housing crunch in the region, not just Woodinville, but Woodinville is a very expensive place to live and work. And affordable housing does several things. One, one is a state mandate. We are required to do it. And if we don't do it, the state can come in and rezone our neighborhoods and rezone us in a way that Woodinville has no, very little input on and concentrate density in areas that we have determined that aren't appropriate and, and that our residents don't want. And then, also, we, we have, we, we get about 56% of our operating budget comes from sales taxes. And in order for businesses, every business owner that I talk to, they all say the same thing. Finding and attracting and keeping employees is hard. Every, every single one of them will tell you that. And we need for our workers and our teachers and our wine servers and baristas and stuff that serve our, our community and contribute to our sales taxes, which keeps, everybody in, in Woodinville that lives here has amongst the lowest city portion of your residential property taxes is amongst the lowest in the state. And the reason for that is we get oversized punch that a lot of cities would envy from our sales taxes. So, affordable housing is not only a mandate by the state, which the, the, they can take away some of our taxes we use to operate the city. We, we, we need it to, to operate our economy. And we also, affordable housing is a component, it's a human need. We should strive to have, in my opinion, strive to have a roof over everybody's head. But also, it's, it's a, a way of, of preventing homelessness. We have a homelessness crisis in the region too. And affordable housing is a, a key component of that. And then, the, the other housing I really appreciate is that we, up until recently, have not been able to get property owners and developers to talk about condominiums, which is, and I made the case down in Olympia for this, it's the most effective way to build affordable housing. And it's also a way for people to get into the ownership market effectively. And it's also a way for people to downsize if they choose. So, I, I appreciate that fact and I'd like to see that continue. And the mix of, of townhomes, you have senior living, we have family units. So, everything from family- So everything from family units all the way up to senior living and ownership opportunities, um, more than just, we get, we've gotten plenty of apartments because developers, uh, have chosen not to build condominiums because of the condominium, condominium laws. I talked to a lot of them and they were so onerous that they would have had to set their property aside, waiting to be sued for up to 10 years on the condo. So I appreciate that fact. I just want to highlight that, uh, uh, you know, uh, I, I think we should discuss this because housing is a need. We have a significant residential and public benefits impact to this, but we need affordable housing. This is one way that we can get that by, uh, working with, uh, developers, um, and, and, and getting some of the needs that we have in our city. So I appreciate that. Any other questions? Uh, okay. So, uh, Mr. Grunblau, I guess you have some.
I think everything's pretty much been covered, so let me just jump forward on the slides here, um, because I was just going to highlight what's already been discussed, that, yeah, you're, the main action being asked of council tonight is whether to put this code amendment proposal, um, on the planning commission's work plan, uh, one to help Green Partners out, but also, um, the other part of this is also the, for us to take a look because there is some missing components in terms of when the snaps put together, there was different circumstances and stuff. So it is a good time to take a look at that. So, um, I think just kind of can jump to, I think most of you are familiar with what the proposal was. So, uh, we do have the ability to put it on the planning commission's work plan and can start working on it, um, can kind of fit it in with the stuff we're doing right now between middle housing and unit lot subdivisions. So, um, I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have about the code amendment.
Deputy Mayor Randolph.
I was curious if this would, it, it looks like it, the checkbox is there was plenty of space for this to be added without affecting the existing schedule, but I wanted to confirm.
Yeah, it, it wouldn't affect the existing schedule. We can, we can pretty easily slot it in with the other things we're working on.
Right. With that, I move to add the planning commission's 2025 work plan and item to the consider amending figure 2142 dot zero four zero, active use at the street level in the CBD zone.
Second. I have a motion second. Deputy Mayor Randolph, maker of the motion, you have a floor.
Uh, I do appreciate this coming before us. I think one of the things that I had in terms of questions is what would this actually do for the ability for us to do ownership opportunities and affordable housing? Those are two major things that we want as council. I know we certainly want to have retail establishments, but I also understand that there's a limit of control that we have on what's happening in retail. There's been a lot of closures lately and I think we can speak to that as our, as a city, that we're seeing things actually disappear. But at the same time, I think that having retail spaces, as Councilmember, uh, Evans discussed, having those small spaces, having additional opportunities for those new businesses to form in Woodinville present a great opportunity if we're not going to be able to do large retail, which is currently, uh, moving away from, uh, having to revise how they operate.
Councilmember Bess Campbell.
Uh, so I was not allowed to ask my question before, so I'll ask it now. Uh, one of the highlighted portions on the map is in East Frame, right? And that allows for additional height already with development agreement. The, right along 139th, is that part of the East Frame Design District?
That's correct.
So that would also have first, not only would that have extra height, that would also have first floor residential with this, with this amendment.
The extra height, um, you're talking about over the 57-foot height to be able to get up to the 75-foot, that would have to be authorized in the development agreement.
Right, but East Frame allows for that via development agreement in that area already. So there's an additional height that's allowed. We would be get, we could potentially be giving additional height as well as first floor residential along that strip that's highlighted.
Um, the proposed code amendment wasn't, uh, proposing to do anything about height. Um, it's all basically about where the residential might be along, uh, street. That's all this map does.
Right, but it could potentially be that you could have first floor residential and that East Frame additional 75-foot height in that same development agreement. It's only dealing with first floor residential, but with the East Frame Design District right there, we already allow by code amendment or by development agreement 75 feet. So there is an allowance on the east side of that property for additional housing. And I might as well just get into the comment here. Planning Commission does not set policy. Council sets policy here. And for us to kick this to Planning Commission and say, figure it out, they do what we say because we give them guidance. We give them guardrails. We would like to investigate what percentage of downtown should be retail versus residential. That's guidance. What we're doing here is saying, you do the work for us because we don't know what our politi, policy decision is or what our vision is. And I don't think that's fair to Planning Commission. They are not elected, we are. It's our job to take a tough position and not fall back on them and say, can you do this hard work for us? What I'm seeing in this agreement is let's give it to Planning Commission who will rubber stamp it because frankly, they don't know what we're trying to say up here and I don't blame them. I don't know what we're trying to say up here. I think we need to do a better job providing guidance to Planning Commission before we even consider this code amendment. The biggest problem that I have with this is that we've gone from the Gardens District. We had the flags all around downtown, Gardens District, right outside of Mulvex. You know where those went? They're gone. Now it's the downtown district. Then we see another sign that says the Midtown District. Well, what is it? What are we creating here? And it's moving. The target is constantly moving. First, we need more retail. Nope, we don't need more retail, we need residential. But we're using data that is constantly moving, but we're going to have an entire site vested to ground floor residential. So I don't see how this is a boon for Woodinville, particularly when as a council, we have not provided enough guidance for Planning Commission to make a decision, to make a decision here. So I'm not in favor of sending it to Planning Commission until we, as a council, decide, do we think there's too much retail in downtown? I've not heard anyone in Woodinville say, yep, there's too many places to shop and eat in Woodinville. I've had it. That's something that I have never heard. So until I hear someone say that, I don't think we need to consider residential there because we have East Rail mixed use that we just expanded for residential. And we need to be able to keep retail sales tax because that is what pays to pave the roads in the city, unless of course, we're going to talk about the third rail, which is increasing property tax. So what are we going to talk about? Why aren't we talking about what this council is guiding Planning Commission with? We're punting and it's going to come back to us, the same jumbled mess. So we're not doing our job if we pass it to Planning Commission.
Any more discussion? Any comments? As I said earlier, this is, I was on planning commission. This is exactly what planning commission is designed for, is land use. That's exactly what they exist for. That's their mandated reason for being. And this is land use. And, uh, they, they get a luxury that we don't, uh, get. They get to dive into these land use issues and not have to deal or, or address some of the other more complex issues that, um, council, uh, has to, uh, on a regular basis. So, uh, this is the process. We, we, uh, put, uh, these things to and have for decades to planning to discuss, uh, land use and then come back with a recommendation. And this rubber stamp idea thing is nonsense. That's not what they do. It's not what I've experienced. So, uh, you know, we, we, we've talked about the need, the mandate and the need for Woodinville to have affordable housing, working with a developer on how to do that, uh, on what we want. And we've put a lot of, uh, desires to this project. We, we express desires on affordable housing. We express desires on public space, uh, open space, greenery setbacks. And, uh, what, what, if I understand that Green Partners is saying is to move forward, they need to have some kind of certainty on how they can actually design out the whole, the whole project. So, um, it's more than appropriate to send it to planning and, and they'll come back, which they always do, come back with recommendations and, um, we, we can address them at that time. So I'm in favor of, uh, sending it to planning. I know they'll do a thorough job on, uh, looking into, uh, how this affects, uh, land use and, uh, I think it's more than appropriate, so. Any other discussion? Seeing none, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Bess Campbell?
No.
Mayor Millman?
Yes.
Councilmember Arndt?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
No.
Deputy Mayor Randolph?
Yes.
Motion carries five two. Thank you. And thank you for, uh, your time, uh, patience with this discussion. Uh, business item number nine, discussion of northeast 195th Street Quarter for School Safety Camera Pilot Program. Ms. Souza.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. I will have Joshua Jeffrey make the presentation, um, just like the last presentation. Bo Chief Myers and I are available and will support Joshua during the presentation and after.
Well, thank you very much. It's my pleasure today to talk again about, uh, school zone safety cameras and specifically to kind of walk through some of the policy questions that, that will help frame and guide, uh, the engagement with this, this particular program. So at our last meeting, we presented the results of a traffic safety and equity analysis. Part of that, uh, analysis showed that along northeast 195th Street near Woodinville High School, the average speeds were between eight to 15 miles per hour above the posted speed limit. And then 95.4% of traffic exceeded, uh, the 20 mile per hour school zone speed limit by more than five miles per hour. Then getting even more granular into that, 85.6% of vehicles exceeded the standard speed limit of 25 miles per hour by at least five miles per hour throughout the day. This is also the area that we've historically had the highest volume of daily trips as well as the highest, uh, recorded collision history, at least within the study areas, uh, that we were looking at. City Council approved a phased traffic calming program as well as, uh, started the conversation on a pilot safety camera program as well. So with that context in mind, what, what we want to give the idea of the administration and operation, how this program might actually function as well as what the individual processes could be. So looking at kind of a high level, it really is a key partnership between city staff, the police department and the camera vendor. The service model would be that the vendor owns, operates, maintains the system. We pay a flat monthly price for that. It's not a percentage of the fines. It's, it's contract, contractually, uh, negotiated as a part of the solicitation process. And then as we were talking about it, we, we, the pilot term would be a minimum of two years that would allow, allow cost recovery for, for the materials and, and the camera systems itself. And then we were also looking at deactivating the cameras potentially during, uh, long school breaks. When we're thinking about the violation process, what happens is the camera detects a, a potential violation and captures the vehicle's image. Particularly, they're looking at the car itself and the license plate. The driver and, and the, the occupants are, are blurred or obfuscated. The vendor then reviews the, that for accuracy, forwards to the city within seven days. The police would then validate that and respond to the validation with, respond to the vendor within 14 days of the violation taking place. That's actually a state law requirement that the notice of infraction has to be sent within 14 days. And then the vendor themselves send out the notice of infraction. While they're the person who's sending it out, the actual form would be what we would designate. So it would have our information on it, would have our, our look at it. It's just a fact that they're the ones who are sending the form itself. Then, once the, the, uh, individual receives a notice of infraction, they have several, um, opportunities to kind of interact. One would be the ability to purely pay the fine. Uh, they can also request a hearing. They can submit affidavit that they're not the driver. That's actually a state requirement. Or they can apply for fine reduction if eligible. And there's a few of those we'll walk through as we kind of walk through the policy conversations. So, moving right along, um, kind of set up these policy questions. I have quite a few of them. What I think I'll do is I'll, I'll try and, and ask the question, provide a little bit of context, get a little bit of consensus from, from, uh, the city council and then work, work through, through as we go through the next one. Moving right into it, uh, the first one is, is to basically understand the program goals. So what do we want to achieve with this, this pilot program? We heard a lot about, uh, what the goals were from, from the city council at the last few times that this has come up. And we tried to, to take all that information, combine it, as well as really dig into, to how this, this information matches our strategic plan. That way we're, we're matching the guiding documents that we have within the city. So from that, we have five achievable outcomes that we're, we're hoping to get. Uh, first is to improve safety for all users. That's, that's the primary driver. That's what we've heard is, is why we're doing this in the first place. The next one that was key was enforcement is not meant to be deter, is meant to be a deterrent, not a punitive measure. The, another one that we've heard is net revenue needs to be reinvested into our transportation improvements. We also want our enforcement efforts should consider the individual circumstances surrounding what, what's going on. And then we want our goals, outcomes and performance to be regularly communicated. Is there anything that, that we're missing or, or outcomes that, that we, we want, want to address at that? Okay, moving, it sounds like there's a consensus. There's a movement.
Uh, Councilmember, or Deputy Mayor Randolph? No. You, okay. I, I actually have, uh, a couple that I think we discussed that I would like to see and I think there was consensus on. Um, we are, are, uh, we are concerned about, uh, data. And so I think Deputy Mayor Randolph, uh, stated it very well last meeting that, uh, I believe that we should do a, a state vendor. Um, I think the data should be deleted after a certain amount of time. So you said that, uh, drivers have an appeal period of time. Uh, Chief Myers was here last time. He didn't know what that length of appeal time, which, uh, I understand that's not his lane, but, um, once that appeal time, uh, is over and they take advantage of it or, you know, don't use it, uh, the data needs to go away. Um, there's no, there's no benefit to anybody of keeping that data. So I want to make sure that, uh, I believe council agrees with this, that the data actually, um, needs to be, uh, safe and then, uh, go away at that point. And then it says here, uh, net revenue reinvested in transportation improvements. I, I took it as, uh, safety improvements.
Yes.
And I don't, I don't know exactly where, uh, like, I, I, you know, maybe the city manager can lighten us, but I, I can imagine some safety improvements that maybe don't exactly fit neatly in the transportation bucket. I'm offhand, I can't think of what they are, but is there anything that, um, like changing that to safety or is that, is that the actual language? Transportation improvements of the state uses?
State guidance recommends, it's called transportation activities.
So that would be sidewalks, bike lanes, speed bumps.
Can we also apply to operations and maintenance, uh, so long as they're related to sa, safety issues? So, uh, those can be flashing signs, uh, the signals, signals, those types of activities as well can apply to it?
Would, would, um, would, I, I would think that calming, traffic calming measures would, uh, be able to be used for that in the future?
Absolutely.
Okay. I, I'd like to point out and reemphasize that 95% of, of the people in the school zone are speeding. And that's a mix of, of, uh, high school drivers, other drivers, and we have a mix right there at the same area of, uh, high school pedestrians and, and also it's right by an elementary school where we have, uh, small children that don't always make the best choices. So, um, that's, that's why, um, I'm in favor of this area because of this, the, the already speeding criteria that we, uh, determine and, uh, the, the safety of some drivers that are learning and some kids that often don't make the best choices all the time. I raised two boys and during those ages, they weren't always making the best choices. So you're always worried about them. So, uh, Councilmember Bess Campbell.
So when this first came to us, um, we had a presentation from the city of Kenmore and Kenmore's policy was they did all the structural improvements first. They front ended it and only then after they've done all the improvements that they do the traffic cameras. We seem to be going at it backwards in that, so it sounds like the first few years of the, this safety program, we're not going to be seeing a lot of that revenue going towards improvements. It's going to be paying off the plan. Once we get through the pilot program, a lot of those fees, from what the staff report was unclear, it was about paying off the, um, the cost of the cameras and of the, the reporting. I, when did, did we ever have a, a discussion where we said, we don't want to go with the Kenmore model, even though they were sort of what we based everything here on? Have we decided that we're going to go the fine model first and get the revenue and then do, um, remediation later? Or are we going to try and do remediation first and then fine later?
I can jump into, um, Councilmember Bess Campbell. I think, um, more in the presentation, I think there are certain traffic calming measures six.
safety improvements that will go into this as well in terms of some of the signs that were identified in the study, the traffic study that was done. So, I think those will be added concurrently with the safety cameras as well. And I think towards the end of the presentation and possibly even in the staff report, there is a corridor study that was identified in the 2024 transportation plan. That would also be, that's also something that is recommended by staff to be added as part of, as one of the investment into, from the revenues into the project itself.
So, is there anything in this pilot program that would prevent us from moving forward with improvements in traffic calming and safety for pedestrians in these areas during the pilot study? Is there anything that says we should wait till the end of the pilot study? Or are we free to make improvements at any time as we see fit?
I think that, Josh can jump in there, but I think that depends on the revenues that are coming. So, I, you know, I think that's a council decision. If, for example, that study, the corridor study, that would look at the entire 195th Street from 136 to the city limits on the west, specifically the safety improvements and everything, would that be, you know, does that study get funded with the revenues that are generated from the camera or it is funded separate from the camera program?
And I will be talking about use of funds a little bit later in it. But, just to briefly address that question, the state does require that the program be cost neutral immediately first. So, that's why even in the staff report, it was mentioned that the initial priority is to make sure that the fees are being paid back and whatever the program maintenance costs are being paid first. That said, its anticipated revenues are going to exceed whatever the operating costs are going to be attached to that, which would mean that we would have the opportunity to look at those other elements, as well as fund the safety projects from our transportation plan or comprehensive plan that go concurrently. There's nothing that prevents us from doing that throughout the entire duration of the project.
Thank you.
Great. So, moving on to signage. This is another one that's required by the actual statutes. The council provides some insight on that. And so, basically, it says what signage and who can authorize installation. What we've been doing in our current procedures is we comply with all MUTCD and state standards for all applicable signage. That includes enhanced warning signs, flashing beacon signs, school zone wind flashing signs, as well as speed feedback signs. The larger policy question is basically who has the authority to approve the installation? For every sign in the city, it's currently the Public Works Director. And so, our recommendation is that it maintains that the Public Works Director be the one who has that authority to install those signs. All right, looks like we got consensus. Moving on, hours of operation. So, this one is very much at the city council's discretion. You can set it within the entire school operating hours, or you can restrict it. Typically, these programs are, at least in pilot phases, are around what are called the bell schedules at the school. Usually, it's an hour prior to the morning bell and between fifteen to thirty minutes after that morning bell. And then, it's mirrored for the afternoon bell schedule. What makes it a little bit interesting in this particular corridor on 195th is you have two schools which have two different bell schedules attached to it. That's very common when schools are nearby to allow parents to be able to travel kids to different schools and make sure everyone gets there on time. So, what we did is we looked at both bell schedules, and that's why it's a little bit longer than that constrained schedule. This, both Woodinville High School and Wooden Elementary School would fall within the range that you see there, which is seven-thirty to nine-thirty a.m. in the morning and three o'clock to five p.m. This also has added benefit since you're having a two-hour window within the morning and the afternoon. It has the added benefit of being a little bit easier to understand when you have different types of signage that you're doing. And that would improve driver clarity of what's going on. And particularly in the afternoon window, it would also have the ability to capture some of those after-school activities as well.
Councilmember Randolph?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that this is what's recommended or at least allowed by the state law?
Correct.
Okay. Councilmember Hart?
Thank you, just a question. I know that students at Woodinville High School do come and go from the school during school hours. And I know on the data that we looked at at our last meeting, you know, we are seeing speeders exceeding the speed limits at all times of the day. So, I do not have students at Woodinville High School, and I would look to maybe some of my colleagues or residents to potentially consider extending that throughout the school day in that corridor, simply because we know that students are coming and going at that time.
That is permissible. We can do that if that's the city council's direction. We can definitely do that.
Councilmember Evans?
Well, as somebody who has a high school address, yes, they do come and go during the day. But, the risk to public health and safety is not as much because there aren't kids walking all over the place. My question was more, what about the days when they're getting out early? Like Wednesdays, like conference season? Like, what do we do in those times? Because I know if we just set it strictly here and we don't allow some flexibility for those special times during the school year, we could see some backfiring of what we're trying to do here.
Sure. Some of that is related to vendor relationships. Most vendors will allow, basically, to set the times, whatever time that procedurally is allowed. This would potentially go into the ordinance. And so, that's why it would, we'd want the language to be more specific. So, the language would be something along the lines that this would be the regular operations unless schools are operating at a different schedule.
Okay, so, what I'm specifically thinking of are early release Wednesdays, conference schedules, especially for elementary schools, because those can go on for like two weeks, and they're getting out really early. And then, I'm thinking of inclement weather days where they may be coming late or leaving early. And so, I just want to make sure in those instances that we have enough flexibility. I love the idea in general of having a standard hours of operation, but these nuances actually are really important for the safety of the program.
Absolutely. We can take a look at that and bring it back with some more information on that. So, I'm going to introduce this, and then I'll have Chief kind of come back and explain a little bit more detail on from a public safety perspective. But, when you're looking at how fines should be structured, there's a couple different parts to this. So, first off, the state law requires that recipients of public assistance and participants in the WIC program are given fifty percent reduction in fines as long as they can show that they're actually qualified for those, as well as for the first violation and any violation thereafter that occurs within twenty days, twenty-one days. So, there's already a built-in reduced fine structure for those who are of low income, as well as those who are participants in WIC. One of the ways that we can address certain fairness and driver behavior issues is by implementing a graduated fine structure. Now, many of our peer cities and peer jurisdictions have also implemented this. And basically, what graduated fines is are you'd have an initial violation notice at some speed, and then you'd have a second tier, which would be a more significant, more significant fine that's based off of a higher speed. From what we've encountered with some of our peer jurisdictions, it has been a favorable circumstance because it helps to eliminate the drivers who are going at extremely excessive speeds during our school zones, safety hours, which is helping to increase the safety within these corridors. Before I turn it over to Chief, I do want to briefly introduce the two tables on this and then the next slide, because these are the data tables that support the recommendation. The first is a copy of the speed data that was within the ACOM study. And this kind of shows how the volume of traffic breaks out during school hours. So, it's the percentage of traffic and what speed of travel that they're going within school hours. So, this, and specifically for the ACOM study, on 195th, they're looking at the school hours. That's one hour before the bell schedule at the high school, because there's other locations that they were doing that were closer to Woodinville Elementary. And then, the p.m., the afternoon ones, is of course the inverse. Let me show you real quickly the next slide, which is the fine schedule for local cities to kind of show how other cities have been tackling this issue of graduated fines. So, it's related to the school zones, the speed, and then the violation and how much occurs afterwards. One thing I will note on here, Bellevue, Issaquah, and Kirkland, when they set their standard fines, because you'll know it's at one twenty-four, a hundred and twenty-four dollars, a hundred and thirty-six dollars respectively, those were the statutory maximums at the time that they put forth their ordinance. None of the cities have adopted or gone back and adjusted their fine schedule from the initial adoption of the ordinance. It's totally permissible. You can totally do that at any given time. But, they've chosen to keep them at that same rate. Bothell and Kenmore chose a reduced rate when they initially applied for the ordinance. That's kind of what I wanted to highlight there. Let me go back, and then Chief can kind of explain from a public safety perspective how our recommendation kind of shapes out a little bit.
Yeah, thanks, Josh. And I appreciate council's feedback that you all are giving on this program. So, when we think about sort of the, on this table, what we're seeing with the data, we, our recommendation is really based around trying to get all of those speeders, the ninety-five percent that are above twenty-five miles an hour, down below that at least. And we think that the graduated fine approach makes sense with having sort of two tiers. If you think about it like this, with the whole way that we're trying to structure this is to incentivize people to slow down. And if we can do that by setting a reasonable enforcement that maybe starts at twenty-five miles an hour or something like that to encourage drivers to get down to the speed limit or near the speed limit. And then, another level of fine for that type of driving behavior that is really excessively dangerous, because our goal is to bring those speeds down. It's not simply to, that we're just looking to, you know, make revenue off of this. It is how do we incentivize people to change their behavior and drive slower? We've seen that this approach is working in other cities, that other cities that have adopted, you know, maybe a grace range of a few miles an hour before the enforcement kicks in, and then a graduated fine above that are seeing good results from that. And so, that's kind of where this recommendation comes from. Josh, you want to go to the next slide? And then, looking at those other, our peer cities. Yep, you can kind of see that the standard violation range that they have there in the second column, there is some difference there. And I think that that's an opportunity for us to start with what our best idea is going to be, and then watch how this works and make sure that we're achieving good results. That if, and try and be as data informed as we can about whether the limit that we set for the standard violation and the graduated violation miles per hour, like, do those make sense? And are we seeing behavior change because of it? I think Josh spoke to the...
Chief, I got a council member with a question. Councilmember Evans?
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt you, Chief. My question here is, we know what the school zone mile per hour is, but in that second column, are we taking a look at a twenty-five mile an hour standard zone? Or when I look at Bothell, are we looking that the standard, when it's not school hours, is up to thirty-five miles an hour? In Kenmore, it's up to thirty miles an hour. Is that, is that how I should interpret this?
No. I think, let's, I think that we can assume in these that they're just talk, this is only dealing with during school hours, all of this whole fine table.
Okay.
So, during school hours, Bothell will cite you if for driving speeds twenty-one miles an hour to thirty-five miles an hour at a rate of a hundred and thirty-nine dollars. And during school hours, if you're driving at above thirty-six miles an hour, you get a two-hundred-and-fifty dollar violation. Does that make sense?
Yes, and thank you for explaining that, because I wasn't a hundred percent sure. So, basically, in Bothell, you can't even go one mile over twenty. But, in Kenmore, you could potentially go up to six miles over.
Right, yes. And, I mean, if you remember back to the Kenmore presentation where they kind of talked about this is, they found that twenty-five miles an hour was a, they felt was a reasonably safe speed that they wanted to try and encourage people to get to. And that they even publicly post that enforcement doesn't start until twenty-six miles an hour. And so, you know, Kenmore residents can know that they can drive by that camera at twenty-five miles an hour during school zones, and they won't get a fine. And I just, I mean, I thought that was kind of a refreshing bit of transparency that I like, that I don't, I think we have to be mindful of, a program like this, in order to be successful, needs to be perceived as fair in order for it to continue to be viable. And so, I think doing things like that, I think folks' expectations when it comes to speed is that there's a couple miles an hour of grace. And that, and as long as we, if that's sort of our recommendation for what this would look like, probably something more like what the Kirkland or Kenmore fine structures look like, where there is a grace mile an hour. And if council chooses, and I've got no issues with us even saying that or making that public.
Okay, can I just jump in really quick? Sorry, I'm almost out of my time, I know.
That's all good. I can't see you guys, so please just jump in.
No, that's fine. So, I had a question, since this is my second time back on the fines. If I remember right, in Kenmore, people could just check a box if it was a financial burden. They didn't have to come like prove anything, right?
That was for whether or not they were a driver. So, there's an affidavit provision where they, you can say that the ticket goes to, there's a presumption that the ticket goes to the registered owner. And if they're, you say that you're not the driver at the time that the infraction occurs, because it's not recording the face and it's not recording who it is, then there's a presumption of innocence, that you weren't the one that actually did the violation, so it's waived. That's what that one was about.
Yeah. And actually, the next slide speaks to that, if we're ready to move to that.
One more thing before we move on. Just wanted to note that the one hundred and forty-five dollars that was the standard fine is the current statutory maximum for a standard vehicle infraction. That was part of that recommendation on the graduated fines. Are there any concerns or any additional thoughts that you would like us to research regarding this type of a fine structure? All right, so it seems like we've got some...
Are you asking for input, or?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Across? Yeah. All right, the...
You haven't addressed, led addressed, I called them on by the chair.
Point well taken. Councilmember, please ask to be recognized before Councilmember Taylor.
Gotcha. All right. Can we go to the other slide with the cities? Okay, looking at this...
Okay, look, looking at this, Chief, were you suggesting a one fine and hold off on the graduated until we get data?
I think that we should implement a standard fine and a graduated fine.
Okay.
And watch the data.
Okay. So I, my, my take is 26 for the standard violation, so 25 plus, well, it would be 26 plus, and a graduated fine at 36 plus. And use the maximum like the 100, what was it, 145 for the standard fine?
Correct.
Okay. And 250 was the max for the?
Two, so state law allows you to double the, the standard fine? No local jurisdiction has done that.
Okay. Yeah. Two, 250 or 200? Yeah. That would be a suggestion range.
Great, thank you.
Okay, then just talking about some, some ways that, that enforcement works out in practice on this. So I want to keep in mind that these types of violations are, are like parking tickets in that they don't go on driving records. And that is backed up because we don't know who the driver is when we take those photographs. It's just at the back of the car. And so, so it's considered a, you know, a civil, non-moving infraction. And the effect of that is that it doesn't impact insurance or driving records like moving violations do. And so then there's kind of two ways that, you know, there's the, the, someone can contest by saying that I was not the driver. And they can also seek a reduction in, in the infraction with an ability to pay calculation that we can put in place. And so there's sort of two ways to mitigate it after that as well. And then, just thinking about alternatives, because I know that was part of the discussion in the last presentation. What we currently have in place at our court includes, we have youth traffic courts already in place that we've been using for juveniles, for juvenile drivers. But those are, those are moving violations. And the sort of the, the hook to get people involved in youth traffic court is that they don't want this to go on their driving record and to drag up their insurance. And so the incentive for them to participate is to, to remove that. And that's been, that's, that's useful and we, we think that's a good program. We also participate in community court. That's for misdemeanors, and so not really what we're looking at here. And so, I, I think that the, the alternative pathways to enforcement that are worth us, like, making sure that we do well, is making those, those ways of contesting this, either because I wasn't the driver or because I can't pay this ticket. Make those as easy for people to access as possible. I think this program will be highly successful even if we don't get much ticket revenue. The idea with this is to change behavior, driving behavior. And so I could care less whether someone actually has to pay that ticket or not. I think the fact that you get one of these things in the mail is going to remind you to slow down the next time. And it's going to be effective even if they can show I wasn't the driver or have the, you know, I, I'm unable to pay this and seek another way to, to resolve it. I think the other, the other point here on this is that recognizing that we use the Kirkland Municipal Court, I, I, I'm going to recommend that any policies that we put in place, as much as possible, that we make sure that those are in line with the court, the existing court process. Certainly, Kirkland would, can do things differently if, if our process is different than maybe the city of Kirkland, their traffic enforcement program. But I'm also aware that, you know, that just also brings up opportunities for error and mistakes. And so I think the better that we have our process look like what Kirkland has been using for a while, the more likely that, you know, something won't fall through the cracks or, or some person, you know, their, their issue doesn't get resolved satisfactorily. Are there questions on any of this?
Councilmember Edwards has a question.
Yeah, this is a rare occurrence. I was, a question I always wanted to ask, I never got the chance to ask here. What's the process ever, is there ever a process where they could get a moving infraction and a non-moving infraction at the same time? So they blow through the, the traffic area, they get pulled over, they get ridden up, and they're also on camera? How does that work?
Yeah. I mean, I think that is certainly possible. And if they got that, it would likely not be for a, it would likely not be the same, the same underlying issue, would not be speed and speed. You likely wouldn't get a, a non-moving speed zone ticket and a moving speed zone violation. But it may be something like, you know, the speed zone ticket and a failure to yield a stop sign or a, you know, or if there's a collision involved, there could be a, you know, failure to, you know, failure to yield for, to prevent a collision or something like that. And so I think the process for that would, and they, that person would likely be, be facing sort of two tracks of, I need to resolve this, this speeding, this speeding ticket through the sort of parking, the not, the civil infraction route, and then separately deal with the, the moving violations. I think that likely, we, you know, we would be looking to minimize people's confusion on this. Because we, yeah, because we're, we're not looking to, this isn't supposed to be a gotcha moment. And so we're not going to look at setting up speed traps right next to the schools, the, the speed zone with the flashing lights. So it would, it could pop up in something like a collision scenario or if there was some other really aggressive driving behavior. And, and I, I think then we'd have to look at, see like, if, if, if we determine that we were double penalizing the exact same behavior, for, if for some reason there was a, a speeding ticket and a speeding ticket, we could likely resolve that by, when the, the validation process comes through us for the, the camera ticket, to simply void that out because, because it's being captured by that other one. So I think we've got a process to, to check that, though I think it'd be pretty rare.
Thank you. Great. So this is one of the big questions. So how might these funds be used? So as I mentioned before, priority is, is first and foremost, program administration, that's statutory. Then what is called traffic safety activities. And there's basically two categories of this. One is operations and maintenance, and the others are more longer-term capital improvement projects. And so they're kind of lumped together, but those are the two, two, the next levels of priority. One thing we are suggesting is that initial reinvestment of any revenues be put into the Northeast 195th Street corridor analysis and design. And that was identified in our transportation plan when we were developing that, as well as it's also in, in our comprehensive plan now. The estimate for, for that is about $200,000. But that would guide any of those capital improvement projects, the, along 195th, that would reinforce this type of behavior and potentially create more traffic calming within this, this area, as well as what other pedestrian and bicycles improvements that might be, be necessary within, within this space. So that is, is the initial, and this is based a lot on the conversations we previously heard from, from Council on how to prioritize these projects. Great. So the next question is really how long of a warning period? So statutory requirement is one month. Majority jurisdictions do two months. Two months seems to be, and a warning period is when the cameras are operable, but instead of actually seeing an infraction, what you're doing is sending a notice letter that basically says you would be getting an infraction if, if this was outside the warning period. So this really is an important tool, particularly for residents and those who are highly frequenting these corridors. That way they, they become used to, to the hours of operation of, of what's going on. And there's less surprise about, about what's, what's happening with these cameras. That's why a lot of jurisdictions have opted for a longer warning period than what is statutorily required. In addition to this, there's this, that second layer, which would include our outreach activities, which, where we would activate our full social media, our newsletters, events, as well as providing multilingual materials in order to prove access to those. So...
Councilmember.
Thank you. I know when they did the rollout of the cameras in Bothell along 160th, they had the two-month warning period. And they were able to coincide that with the start of school in the fall. And that was, I think, very effective in driving behavioral change because it was right as everyone was getting back into the school schedule. I don't know what possibilities we have of aligning those two timelines, but that was, they were able to take advantage of the school's communication systems as well as the city's in spreading the word to families and to commuters at that time. So just a suggestion.
Thank you. Great.
Are we, are we thinking that if this is approved and we move forward, would that start at like the next school year? Is that kind of the target? Or when are we thinking this could be implemented?
Yeah, so I do have a slide coming up a little bit later that kind of walks through the full timeline on this. There is some engagement period that we'd like to frontload with this to, to make sure that we're reaching the community around that, which will shape kind of when the Council would expect the ordinance to go, go through. And then our solicitation guidelines attached to that. So if you don't mind, I can get to that in just a couple more slides, but...
Okay. I, I have a, if Chief, is Chief still around? Chief, can you, do you remember?
Yes.
Do you remember a couple of things? When we were talking about the increased speed from 20, and I believe it was 25, you had a number where the seriousness or the fatality or the life-threatening condition increased pretty dramatically. Do you, I don't remember those numbers. Do you remember what that number was from 20 to something?
Let me see if I can find it before we're done with this discussion.
Okay, and while you're hunting for that, a question for anybody who can answer it. There was also a percentage of people who, a high percentage that don't get a second fine. And I'd like to know that number as well. And then while we're digging that up, I think, I think it would behoove us to, some period before school starts, start the, start the outreach and do a significant amount of outreach and then give that window of warning so the public has a quarter or something to really get used to the new process. I, I, I think that the, the increase or the, the goal is to decrease speed, which is increasing safety in some very important areas and are very vulnerable, residents particularly are kids. So I'm in for moving this with, as long as we can put in the right guardrails. Chief, were you able to find that?
Yes, I was. The first number is that at, at 25 miles per hour, the pedestrian crash survival is 90%. And at... And, oh shoot, now I don't have the corresponding number. I don't, I don't have the corresponding number to that. The other number that you asked for is how many, that what we showed was that in Kirkland and Seattle, based off of those two cities' speed camera programs, nine out of 10 drivers did not receive a second citation for their program.
Okay, thank you. And then I have one last question before I'm going out of time. So we are, most people are acutely aware that there's a staffing shortage in our police departments, and King County is no, who we contract with is no different. Is there, do you have the capability of hiring sufficient amount of officers or diverting resources to do traffic, consistent traffic mitigation over there? Do you have the capability of doing that? Would you be able to divert resources or hire sufficient personnel to be able to do this?
I mean, I think a lot of the answer to that is a, is a budget question. All right. And are you talking about for this particular program or?
Well, I know, I know that...
Outside of this program?
I know very well that King County has had a hard time hiring officers. I think that's probably been getting better. But also, so we are, we are down the list on being able to hire our allotted number of officers. And I think each officer was, I think it was 210 with benefits or something like that, some number like that. So I guess my question is, with existing personnel, do you have, do you have the, do you have the ability or would that take away from other policing to just have police officers over there on a regular basis giving out tickets? Or, and even do we have the ability to hire those even if we wanted to? And then the other, the last question would be, Council would have to answer is like, if we have the ability to hire, which I don't think we do, would we want to pay that extra amount rather than have a technological way of addressing the safety issue?
Yep. Our, under our current model, with our current staffing, any dedicated traffic enforcement is difficult. We are not really staffed for that. And so all, you know, most of our, our bodies, our bodies, our officers are, are supporting 911 response. And so there's some marginal time that they spend doing traffic enforcement. But, but it is not, it's not dedicated and it's, it's not, it's not sufficient. So really, anything that we need to, that we want to do that's dedicated is going to require additional resources. With this, what we've proposed for the, for this particular program and how we would do our part in managing this program is utilizing officers on overtime. There is the ability to do additional traffic emphasis, whether with this program or some other, or another idea, you know, with maybe officers doing enforcement through additional overtime expenditure. It's a costly way to do it. If we were to add, like, dedicated officers for traffic enforcement, we could do it, we could get officers, you know, staff from the sheriff's office to do it. It is, like you say, I think it's well above 210. I think it's more like 250. I can't remember what the last number was, but it's, it's significant cost.
Thank you. Councilmember Beth Campbell.
So I was thinking about the traffic infractions by Woodinville High School. And it's very rare that you have a student who owns their own car. It's going to be their parents' car. So every time a student speeds in that speed area, they could simply say, well, Mom, can you say I wasn't driving the car and I don't get fined? So you could perpetually have the same people speeding and not facing the consequences of speeding. So is there some sort of metric that we can have about how frequently a single user says, I wasn't driving, I wasn't driving, it wasn't me, it wasn't me? And can we also get data on who is going at those 35 mile an hour excessive speeds? And if they are consistently doing it, then maybe that is an occasion when the police could show up and little blue lights and a little moving infraction really does do a world of wonder for mitigating behavior. So that, again, is part of the data collection. But I would like to see, because it, again, it's by high school and a lot of high school kids drive their siblings to school. All it takes is a parent who doesn't want to pay a $250 fine and people really will come up with anything that they can to avoid it. So I want to be mindful that while it's not punitive, it's also not not punitive. It's intended to change behavior. So if we're giving a loophole that, forget the pun here, you could drive a car through, let's not do that.
Thank you. So... So moving on to... This is the last policy question that I'll have. I know there were some questions about some timelines. This is my very next slide after this one. So this one is based, how should the city select future locations? And so what we're really proposing is that staff identifies and evaluates locations. It's going to be a combination between the police department notifying us of potential collisions or potential safety issues that particularly traffic infractions that they have identified within the community. And then our engineering team looking more from the traffic safety aspect of what's going on and to look at those. From there, we would conduct the traffic and equity analysis. We're proposing that the data for decision-making be valid for two years. That way, we are able to refresh it when it's necessary, but not so often that we're constantly doing traffic and equity analysis. And then if there is a position or a place that's suitable for installation, based on what we've already walked through with these types of locations, then we'd bring it for the city council's approval and for a possible future installation site. So this is the very last slide, and this is our next steps, where we kind of talk through what our intent is. So first part is this, is our outreach and stakeholder meetings. We're intending to have that with the community, with the neighborhood, and ideally with the school districts and the schools in June. We've actually reached out to our school districts and the schools to see if they would want to partner with us, to have this type of conversation, as well as to get their feedback on it and to make them aware of what we're discussing and potentially looking at. We're still in those conversations right now, so nothing's been set quite yet. But if we don't hear back from them, because school is ending very shortly for a lot of these schools, we will be taking the lead on that and setting up our own meetings with the community. Then, once we get that input from our stakeholders, we'll bring it back for the city council's review, so that way we can finalize these policy decisions, as well as, depending upon what that looks like, we may have a draft ordinance as well at that time. We'll also... That would... You would then take a look at for adoption. Post-adoption, we would work with the vendor for the solicitation. With this type of schedule, we anticipate a camera installation by the end of the year, with the warning period starting late 2025, early 2026, probably after post-the winter holiday break. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any of the questions.
Any further questions from the council? CNN, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
All right. Business item number 10, summary of the 2025 legislative session. Mr. Hill?
All right. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Jared Hill, and I'm going to be providing you with a legislative recap on the 2025 session. Many have said that the '25 legislative session has been one of the most tumultuous and emotionally charged sessions in recent history, is marked by significant political tension, major fiscal challenges, and the sad death of two legislatures. So just some stats on the session. The 2025 session began on January 13th and ended on April 27th. It was a long session of 105 days, with luckily no special session called. There is some speculation that a special session could still be called before they go back next January to address some federal funding cuts that could be in the pipeline. The legislature passed an astounding 423 bills out of the over 2,000 that were introduced during session. Those 423 bills are then sent to Governor Ferguson for review. The governor has five days to act on a bill if it's delivered more than five days before the legislature adjourns. If the bill is delivered within five days of adjournment, the governor has 20 days to act on it, not counting Sundays, which actually makes today, May 20th, the deadline for action to be taken. The most pressing issue this session was the staggering $16 billion budget deficit. Lower-than-expected sales tax collections, inflationary costs, and increased spending resulted in fewer dollars to maintain current levels of service. The reality of the shortfall quickly consumed legislative discussions, and budget bills faced significant pushback. The list of tax and fee increases is extensive, ranging from six cent tax gas increases to increases in the cost of ID cards and various other taxes, primarily on businesses. Today, Governor Ferguson signed the state transportation budget into law, which includes $5 million in move-ahead Washington funds being delivered to the city of Woodinville in the '25-'27 biennium. This allows us to deliver a trestle replacement project faster and with increased fiscal security. And this was our number-one legislative priority, so we're really thrilled to see that this made it across the line. In addition, our number-three legislative priority was for the education system, and Washington's final budget includes major boost to the K-12 education as well. The legislature removed a longstanding cap on state funding for students with disabilities and allocated increased funding for materials, supplies, and operating costs. K-12 education actually saw a 7% increase from the prior biennium. And a couple of bills I wanted to just give you a final recap on here. So the final form of HB 1217, which is the Tenant Protection Bill, is not as strong as it started, but still delivers some assistance. HB 1217, or the Housing Stability Act, limits rent increases for existing tenants in Washington State to 7% plus inflation or 10%, whichever is lower, and sets a 5% cap on rent increases for manufactured or mobile home lots. The bill also restricts move-in fees, security deposits, and late fees. Landlords can still raise rent by higher amounts for new tenants. And we'll make sure that our local ordinance is in compliance with the new state law as well. And condos should also be a lot easier to build, thanks to HB 1402, which you heard a little bit tonight, actually. The primary mechanism in the bill that aims to support this form of development is an ability for a condo developer to offer an express warranty of quality workmanship and insurance coverage, rather than being subjected to the existing implied warranty statutes that are seen as creating too much liability to cost-effectively insure. And thanks to local businesses and wineries, community members, and city council advocacy, we were able to explain how SB 5184, or the Parking Reform Bill, was going to hurt our economy. As the bill passed, it dictates no parking requirements can be included for residents residents under 1,200 square feet, commercial space under 3,000 square feet, or ground-level commercial and mixed-use buildings. Thankfully, advocacy efforts with senators across the East Side, even outside of our own delegation, allowed for this bill to include an exemption for cities under 30,000 In addition, AWC helps serve as a voice for the 65% of Washington's residents who live in a city or town. They have legislative priorities as well, and they often have key impacts on local jurisdictions. For several years, there has been an effort by AWC to revise the property tax cap to tie it to inflation up to 3%, so local elected officials can adjust the property tax rate to better serve their communities. While progress was made on this during the session, this year, they were not successful in getting it across the finish line. And then I also want to take a minute to highlight some of the major accomplishments that AWC had this session. Their lobbying team had worked incredibly hard, and when Woodinville has a concern on a bill, they were able to carry that out across their membership and take a strength and argument back to Olympia. Want to just highlight a couple of those here. They provided four mil... They advocated for $4 million in grants to fund startup costs for city co-response programs. They passed HB 1811 to develop training for co-response training academies and provide support for co-responders. They helped pass HB 2015, creating a new state grant program and new councilmanic local state tax option for funding public safety programs. And the legislature budgeted $100 million for funding grants in that space as well. There was increased funding to cities for public defense by $2.7 million in the Office of Public Defense Grants and an additional $900,000 in existing grants. They maintained the Public Works Assistance Account, dedicated to funding and created dedicated funding streams for the future. They dedicated 2.5% of the six cent gas tax increase to cities. The six cent add-on will grow by 2% annually to account for inflation. They addressed the condominium insurance issues that I talked about earlier, and finally dedicated $32.5 million to the Bryan Abbott Fish Barrier Removal Board for local culvert corrections that are required by state statute. In addition to AWC, Woodinville is also a member of ARCH, or A Regional Coalition for Housing, whose purpose is to build more affordable housing faster. Tonight, we have Sophie Glass, who recently joined ARCH as the New Government Affairs Policy and Communications Manager, and recently provided the executive board with the recap of the ARCH legislative priorities with a great presentation that I asked her to come and share with you all tonight. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Sophie.
Thank you so much, Jared. On? I think it is. Okay. Good evening, council. It's really good to be here tonight, and I'm going to just expand upon the good work that Jared did in talking about this very significant session. So you can go to the next slide. So Jared mentioned the budgets. This was a big day for the budgets. Just a couple hours ago, Governor Ferguson signed all three budgets, the capital, operating, and transportation. So I'm going to talk a little bit about how those budgets interact with ARCH's priorities, which is really, as Jared said, building more affordable housing faster. So next slide. So the capital budget is $7.6 billion, and kind of the headlining amount of money there is the Housing Trust Fund at $605 million. This is a 15% increase over previous budgets, and that's significant and kind of the result of a lot of housing advocates, because we know that this was a very, very lean... The attempt was for it to be a very lean budget year. I'll talk more about the Housing Trust Fund in a moment, but another program that might be of interest to you all as local government is the Connecting Housing to Infrastructure Program at $100 million. Due to some successes with that program and previous budgets, this was a 67% increase. And then other capital items include the Affordable Housing Supply and Preservation Programs, Transit-Oriented Development, Youth Shelters and Housing, and the Veterans Affordable Housing Facilities. Go to the next slide. So something just to call out here is not all these funds are competitive. And so, you know, in the bottom four that I just mentioned, 100% of those are earmarked to specific projects. It sounds like Woodinville had some specific projects in mind. I'm not sure if it ties directly to those, but, you know, when it comes to the CHIP program, 15% are already set aside for specific projects, but that means there's a remaining percentage that could be competitive. And similarly, the Housing Trust Fund, the majority is competitive, but there are some projects that are just already set in stone there. So next slide. So just taking a quicker, deeper dive into the Housing Trust Fund in particular, you'll see that the kind of almost half... Excuse me, almost a third of the dollars in there is for multifamily rental units, followed by the Apple Health and Home Permanent Supportive Housing, Home Ownership Program, Preservation, the Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Community. And then this was a presentation for all of ARCH, so we just did note that one of the earmarks was for Orchard Gardens with Bellevue, another one of ARCH's members. So the next slide. So then comes the operating budget, which is the big one. And within this budget as well, there are several line items that support affordable housing. One is the Covenant Home Ownership Program, followed by the Operation of Homelessness Housing Programs, including shelters, the Consolidated Homelessness Grant, funds for encampments, funds for building, operation, and maintenance of permanent supportive housing, sometimes called PSH, and then some funds related to the Growth Management Plan Implementation. So some grant money there. Go to the next slide. So those were the kind of the key items. I haven't done a line-by-line comparison of what the governor signed versus what was in the proposed budget, but given the reading that I did about an hour ago as the news hit, it seems like most of what the governor changed was pretty minor and not related to housing at all. So in terms of legislation, I just want to, first of all, thank Woodinville for being part of ARCH. I am a new staff member, and as I'm getting up to speed, I'm reading about the work of all the cities, and I'm just really pleased to be here tonight and learning more about your housing landscape. But one thing that Woodinville and the full ARCH board did was set some legislative priorities a couple months before the session began. And one of the priorities was really focused on the real estate excise tax, or REIT. So there were two items that the ARCH board felt like were important when it comes to REIT. One is to allow greater flexibility in REIT revenues, and the other piece of it was to direct the Department of Revenue at a state level or other agencies to direct what would be necessary for a graduated local REIT option. So bills entered the mix. Jared mentioned just a large number of bills, and if you can go to the next slide. ARCH was excited to see... Oh, the other legislative priority not related to REIT had to do with supporting affordable housing on properties owned by religious organizations or faith-owned real estate. So that was the second piece of kind of a two-part focus for ARCH, REIT, and then a faith-based real estate. So in terms of outcomes, just there was great success when it comes to REIT. And so House Bill 1791 passed, and this had a couple really important components. One is around flexibility, and I heard... I heard Association of Washington Cities gave really great testimony about this, about how small jurisdictions like Woodinville or smaller jurisdictions, there's a lot of confusion about what could be used with REIT I and REIT II. And what this bill does is that it harmonizes the use of REIT I and II and allows both types of REIT for capital, operation, maintenance, and affordable housing. The second piece is around simplicity. I got into the weeds about what it really takes to use REIT dollars, and it's very complicated. And so the idea is to reduce the administrative burdens and barriers so that more jurisdictions can really lean in and use their REIT dollars. And then the other piece was around certainty. So many of you might know that there was this kind of expiration date for being able to use REIT dollars for affordable housing. That was removed. Affordable housing is now baked into it. Go to the next slide. And there was one more thing that was very significant for ARCH, which was in the bill that passed due to the advocacy and work of ARCH members, including Newcastle. There's a provision here that talks about REIT dollars can go to inter-local housing collaborations. That is what ARCH is, an inter-local housing collaboration. And so in being able to pool funds from across different ARCH members, that now includes potential REIT dollars, it'll just take ARCH money further in building more affordable housing in East King County. So next slide. A big check mark, especially around ARCH, around REIT and the flexibility components. And so just congratulations to you all for setting up our priority and really accomplishing one of them. Go to the next slide. So not all aspects of the REIT work were successful. A couple bills died. And then specifically, there was a bill having to do with faith-based affordable housing, House Bill 1859, that did not... Was not successful. ARCH is looking into the potential around faith-based affordable housing, and I believe you all received an invitation to come to our Power of Faith Owned Land Event in early June, where we'll be hearing from the representative who introduced this bill. Go to the next slide. I think that about wraps it up for me. I'm happy to answer questions. Jared was, you know, very involved with the session and probably has a lot of great insights as well, but just again, a real pleasure to meet you all and be here on behalf of ARCH.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Sophie? Deputy Mayor Randolph?
First off, thanks for the presentation. I see that there's a good amount of funding that's been awarded. My question is, can we take those dollars and actually speak to the number of homes and number of people that are affected?
It's a really good question. I'm going to write that down and get back to you, because I don't really know what the kind of calculation is between dollars and the budget and units that can be produced, but I will get back to you.
I would love to hear that.
Yeah.
Counselor Beth Campbell?
So about maintaining the current affordable housing stock that we have, and how do we utilize that money? Where does it come from, and in what order are we doing it? We have some senior housing in Woodinville that has seen better days, and I think maintaining it before it becomes really bad is important. What is the normal timeframe that you see funding available? I see that it's 100% allocated for maintaining the current housing supply. How old are those buildings before they get the renovations that they need to keep them on the market? And how much longer would you guess we would have to wait? Because we're about 20... Maybe 20 years right now. Because we're about 20, maybe 20 years right now.
Yeah. I'm going to look to see if Jared has any thoughts on that one.
I am not sure, but I think that's a great question, so we are going to loop back with you on that one as well. Sorry, Councilmember.
I'm going to lean on the fact that I'm in month three of this job and use that as a very poor excuse for not having an answer to your question, but we will get back to you.
You know what? You have a notebook in front of you and a pen, so I just wanted to make sure that I made good use of your pen.
Oh, yes. It's a nice one. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all so much.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Sophie, for coming. She gave that presentation just a few weeks ago, and I know Council was especially interested in affordable housing and a lot of the work that you guys are doing right now, I think has a lot of overlap with some of this recent legislation that has passed. So I appreciate Sophie taking the time to do this tonight. I would say overall, Woodinville fared very well this session. I appreciate everyone's support in making this happen. So if you have any questions, comments on things you would like to see for next year, notes on how to improve, happy to take that into account and make it happen.
Any questions? Yeah, thank you for the update on that. I really appreciate it. It was, just a shout out to everybody who worked on it. There was a couple of bills that we dodged away from, particularly the parking bill. I think that would have been very detrimental to Woodinville. So everybody that worked on that deserves some kudos, because that was definitely a challenge with the momentum that was going on down in Olympia on that. So, and then shout out to Senator Stanford and Senator Dingrich helped us on that. So, the, and it's, kudos to everybody that worked on it also, getting the $5 million for our move ahead for the project there. That is significant. We're going to be able to move ahead on that. So, again, I said it before, but it bears mentioning again, we've gotten $24 million, I think, in the last two and a half years, and that's a significant boost to our city. It allows us to do some amazing projects without raising taxes and get a lot of infrastructure projects on. So kudos to staff and all the council members that worked on that. Appreciate that. And I did have one question on, so one of the items that was taken up by legislator had to do with the GMA. So I think they put some teeth, some more teeth into the GMA. Can you expand on that a little bit and what, how that relates to Woodinville and what went on in that area?
Yeah, I think what you're probably hearing there is a lot of the housing bills use the language of cities that fall within the GMA have to be compliant with the bill. So I would say in that sense, Woodinville is within the GMA, so those housing bills. But we're on the edge of it, and we're not necessarily the same as a lot of the urban core of the GMA. So I think that puts Woodinville in a unique situation that can be a challenging message to communicate in Olympia, that, you know, we are, just because we are within the GMA doesn't mean we're necessarily set with the same infrastructure as other communities that are. And I think we got that message across loud and clear, but, you know, as this region gets to be more and more populated, there's going to be increased pushes to change GMA boundaries, and, you know, that's something we'll keep an eye on for sure.
Thank you. Councilmember Beth Campbell.
I just actually had a follow-up. So in the news, there was a report that the state lost $500 million of funding for the Green River Dam and Culvert Project. Is that going to have a down, I'm sorry, I'm with the puns tonight, a downstream effect on us in terms of getting grant funding for our culvert replacements? Is the state going to backfill it? Are we hoping that there's a miracle? I don't know. But I was thinking, $500 million is a tough nut to crack, and small projects like ours are usually the first, so if you have any insight into that, that would be really great.
Sure. Yeah, I think nothing I've heard to think that any of our funding is at risk. I would say they're continuing to add new funding into the culvert removal projects because it is mandated for them to be remediated. So at this time, I haven't heard anything to make it feel that that's at risk, but definitely a good thing to keep on the radar.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jared. And again, thank you for everybody that worked on this. It was with the state budget that you highlighted, it was a miracle that we pulled off some of the stuff that we did, so kudos to everybody. Thank you. Our second public comment period. Okay, I'm going to start with a virtual comment. I think Maggie Kempner signed up for the first public comment period, but wasn't available for that. So let's start with Maggie Kempner. Please state your name and whether you live in the city limits, and you have three minutes.
Hi, thanks. My name is Maggie Kemper. I live outside the city limits. I'm making a comment about Woodinville Pride. I'm not one of the organizers, I'm just a very enthusiastic participant, and I had it on my calendar for June 7th. My family and I go every year. Since its inception, it's been amazing to see it grow. Hundreds of people attend now. And so I was disheartened to hear that it may have to be rescheduled or canceled. I'm asking that the city council reconsider that. You know, for me, I think it's a marquee event. I consider it on par with like the tree lighting, Winterfest. And so June is Pride Month. I think that in addition to just the sadness if we can't have the event, because it's so much fun for the community, the harm, the disproportionate harm it would do to this protected class, I also just worry about this June, there are a lot of efforts all over the country where they don't even want people to put up a pride flag. So if this event is not held in Woodinville this year, and word gets out that it's canceled this close to the time when it was supposed to be, I just worry that it could be very suspect of why would a town like Woodinville not have pride this year when they've been celebrating bigger and bigger every year? So I don't know if any effort has been made to try to just problem solve this, where I know a little detail that the other organization is a small church, small event, only two hours long. It just makes kind of common sense to me that they could maybe scooch over to a smaller park, or, you know, it wouldn't do as much proportionate harm to them to sort of change the location. Pride is large. It, you know, it's, it happens in June, this is only two weeks' notice. All the speakers that, other, you know, groups across our area are also having their pride events, so it takes a lot of effort for this small group to organize. I just want to get pride back to its proper place at Wilmont Park so we can have an event that we can be proud of. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, we worked on this all day, pretty much, and we were able to work with the pride group. The event will be at Wilmont Park on June 14th. So we're going to have the event, or they're going to have the event in Wilmont Park, and we worked with them, and I think they were pretty happy with the work that we put in on this. So I just want to let you know, we took this seriously and worked very hard on it, and the event will be June 14th instead of June 7th.
I'm so happy to hear that. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Gary Harris.
My name is Gary Harris. I live within the city limits. And I was, I had one more comment about Green Partners. And on almost any given day, when I go from right straight over here west, Wilmont Park, and go out to 522, it often takes three light cycles to get to, to get onto 522. Maybe, I don't know, 10 minutes, a little longer than 10 minutes to go that far. So I have a bed and breakfast in my house. From this time of the year through the end of September, I may have an additional six people in my house on most days of the week for these several months. These people, a lot of them are from out of town. They ask me, where can I go to eat? What kind of wine tasting places can you recommend? And I have arrangements with a number of tasting rooms. A lot of the restaurant folks know me. But if it gets to the point with this new development, 1,300 units, and if it takes also three light cycles or 10 to 15 minutes to go from Bank America on 140th to the gas station on, at the other end of, the west end of the street right here, well, I'm not going to recommend to those people that they go to dinner downtown in Woodinville. I said you won't be able to park, and you won't be able to get to where you're going. You're going to have to leave 15 minutes early for your dinner reservation, or your reservation at the wine tasting room. So I'm going to recommend that they go somewhere else. And then, kind of in line with that, I think that maybe the council and Green Partners are living in a dream world if they think that in these 1,300 units, and if only 10% of them are judged affordable. And I don't know what the rent is now in Woodinville. I know when some of the other places went up, $1,500 was as cheap as you could get anything. And I'm thinking now that with utilities, parking fee, maybe $2,000 a month is what you're going to be paying to be living in this new development. And the idea that you could go from your place on the fourth or fifth floor with your sunrise view or your sunset view, go down the elevator and walk a block to your job where you're pouring wine on the weekend, or you're waiting tables, or whatever.
Mr. Harris, that's...
And live in a $2,000, I'm almost done, live in a $2,000 a month apartment is a dream world.
Anybody else wanting to speak? Public comment? Okay. Report, City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. One item quickly this evening. On top of all the fun stuff we always get to deal with, and everything is fun, we have one that's more fun coming up, and that's going to Public Spaces. Going to Public Spaces Thursday, we have the topic of art for the Roundabout in 133rd. We closed that solicitation, I think it was last week. We had five submittals, three of them were deemed complete. I think we've got some real possibilities there, and we're excited to work through that process. So we'll be working with the Public Spaces Commission, then coming to council, and then ideally, we're working on taking that out for community engagement at our Celebrate Woodinville Concert Series this summer. So one of the many fun things we're working on. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't, I forgot. Please come to the microphone, and you'll have, state your name and where you live in the city limits, and you have three minutes.
I wasn't expecting this. So, anyway, I'm Christine Harmon. I live in unincorporated Woodinville. One thing I'd like to say is affordable housing is super duper important. So I, I'm here for that. It's the first time I've ever come to a meeting, it's the first time, but I've been, I've only been in Woodinville for nine years now. I lived in Kirkland prior to that, and watching the things that have happened in Kirkland, pretty impressive. I mean, but I don't know what they've done with affordable housing or whatever, but I like some of the looks of that. But affordable housing is so, so very important. It's very important for the community. It helps with schools and funding, and it brings the town a whole sense of community feeling. And anyway, housing is important. But I wanted to say, it just happened to be a hot button for me, this traffic, the enforcement with the lights, highly on board with that. I had a friend who ran through the blinking lights of the school district 20 years ago. She has never done it again. She pushes her car in a cruise control. That's why I do it over by Kamikin. I think it's super important, there's, and it works. I have two friends too that just, they've gotten tickets going by Kamikin, and they don't do that anymore. It's not hard to do. It is a, it's training, it's retraining, and people do fly through things. My daughter's out of college now, but crazy drivers, and when they're young, they make bad decisions, when they're in a hurry, they make bad decisions, old, young, and whatever. So I'm highly on board with that trial. I think that'd be great. It's all about retraining people to, and actually, I think all day would be great through the, for the school day, because it does change, people have the early release and all that stuff. So, but anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I'll try to remember what the rules are now.
Oh, that's okay. We appreciate your input. Okay, reports of council members. Councilmember Evans.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Edwards.
Thank you. Just a reminder that if you want to attend the Pugilist Sound Regional Council's General Meeting, all council members are welcome. The meeting is this Thursday afternoon. All my registration has closed, so if you want to attend, email Sheila Rogers at Pugilist Sound Regional Council to get registered. Unfortunately, I'll be out of town that day, so I won't be able to attend, but I know Councilmember Art, and I attended last year, and it was a great event. So if you want to have your voice heard with the Pugilist Sound Regional Council, we're all members as being part of the organization, you're welcome to register online.
Deputy Mayor Randolph.
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you to the mayor and city manager and my colleagues on council who worked to help find a resolution to reschedule the pride event. I know I got a couple of reachouts about that, so I'm happy to see that it's been properly rescheduled. Also, I wanted to just put a note that I wish there was a way for us to popularize the community conversations and make sure that when people walk in the door, that they know that they're ongoing. So when they walk in the door, we, they know that this isn't the only way to interface with council members. I think it will help with our attendance, and will help with our community awareness. That's all.
Councilmember Beth Campbell.
I got more requests, again, for updates on when the lighting is going to come in on Northeast 1 and 21st. That seems to be the thing that I hear a lot about. Also, the concerns with all of our talk about speeding by the schools, there's renewed concerns and, well, irritation, I think, about not having a full stop on 140th right behind Target. There's the flashing RFBs. People are still finding that there are more suggestions than they are actually stopper people in the crosswalk. So with our conversations about traffic cameras, I think this has come up again. So don't know what we can do other than put out bricks for people to just sort of carry and smile broadly at cars that come by. But it is still an ongoing concern for the people who live there, and if they think it's a problem walking across the street and it's unsafe, then it is a problem.
Councilmember Art.
Thank you. I just wanted to highlight an upcoming event for the first time in a really long time. Woodinville will have an event on the Fourth of July. There will be a Fourth of July 5K, which will benefit the North Shore Senior Centers Wrangler Program, which is a program for adults with disabilities. So it's coming to downtown Woodinville, to Wilmont Gateway Park on July 4th. So just trying to spread the word, both for participants, come run a race, and you'll still have time for other parades in unnamed places and fireworks later that day. And they are looking for volunteers who might be interested in helping out that program, which just, again, goes to a really good cause. Thanks.
Councilmember Taylor.
Nothing to report.
I just had one thing. I was going past Rotary Park this morning, and Public Works was out there cleaning that park up. And when I was coming back after I finished my business, I went over, I was going to take a picture and give a kudos, but they were wrapping stuff up, but they were pressure washing and cleaning that up. It was really nice to see, and I wanted to give them some kudos. So anyway, that's all I have. We're going to adjourn to an executive session. Why don't we meet at 10:00 after? And I got to read the appropriate verbiage. Here it is. Council adjourned to close session for approximately 25 minutes to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency matters relating to agency enforcement actions, or to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation or potential litigation in which the agency, the governing body, or a member acting in official capacity is or likely to become a party when public knowledge regarding the discussion is likely to result in adverse legal or financial consequences to the agency. RCW 42.30.110. No formal action expected to be taken. We'll meet at 10:00 after, please. We'll, we'll meet at ten after, please. Okay, we're back in session. Executive session's over. No formal action taken. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.